Um, Commissioner Askey.
Here.
Commissioner Blackwell.
Here.
Commissioner Brown. Commissioner Burton Falk.
Present.
Commissioner Dietrich.
Here.
Commissioner Dick. Nope. Okay, Commissioner Min- Mingo.
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Mondor here. Commissioner O'Neil? Nope, okay. Okay, um, welcome again. Um, this is the briefing portion for the Planning Commission meeting. Briefing means that the cases are presented as preliminary public presentation for initial questions from the commission. Public testimony is not taken during the briefing portion of the hearing. A reminder to presenters to clearly descri- describe the slide which you're presenting um, in order to assist those participating via audio. On the agenda today, I wonder if we can have the agenda up?
Excuse me, Christine, this is Commissioner Dick, I am here on the phone.
Thank you for joining us. Great.
Sorry.
No problem. None at all. Okay, on the, on the, uh, commission agenda for briefing this today, we've got three items up. Item A is DCP ZDR 2020 11 756, address 428 Smithfield Street, exterior renovations. Item B is DCP ZDR 2020 09 567, 20 Stanwick Street addition. And item C is DCP ZDR 2020 12 234, address 1323 Forbes Avenue, demolition. We began with item A, which is DCP ZDR 2020, um, and, uh, I believe I lost the, uh, agenda, so go ahead and, uh, staff, if you want to start, that would be great.
Thank you. Good afternoon, commission members. This is an application for exterior renovations in the Golden Triangle, so district A and B, uh, on an existing structure greater than $50,000. Uh, so, uh, most of the work is at ground level, uh, for window replacement, uh, but there is also a small penthouse addition for, uh, mechanical equipment, but that is not visible from the right of way. Uh, so we've taken this through staff design review. Staff did, uh, express, uh, concern that most of the windows be transparent. There is some opaque film, um, behind some of the windows. We do understand that there are some interior uses that need to be blocked from, uh, the exterior right of way, and we appreciate overall that they're, um, adding a significant amount of ground floor transparency, uh, to the project. So with that, I'll turn it over to the applicants. I need to do a quick audio check. Ryan, if you can just unmute yourself and make sure we can hear you.
Here.
Great. Right, I'll turn it over to you to make the presentation, and then just let us know when you want us to move the slides ahead.
All right, great, thank you very much. Uh, I'm, my name's Ryan Crowell with Desmond Architects, and I'm joined by Jen B. of Desmond Architects, um, the owner's representative and contractor, Robert Fuller, from Fast Track Construction, as well as Doug Bartolomeo and Aaron Hemquist, who are from the Target corporate, uh, team. Uh, as Kate mentioned, um, this is for the tenant retail portion of the first floor fit out. We are showing, um, there's a lot of collaboration between the Target team and our, our landlord team. So we want to provide the most holistic view, so you'll see a number of things that aren't necessarily a portion of this project, such as the Target signage and the decorative film, but we felt it was worthwhile showing that, just so we get a full understanding of the project. Uh, and next slide, please. So, as we all know, I love the Kaufman's building at the corner of, uh, Fifth and Smithfield. Here, this will occupy about 20,000 square feet of that floor. As I mentioned, um, this is for the landlord shell scope only. Currently, uh, loading is proposed to occur at Smithfield Street. And, um, like I mentioned again, there are a few elements from the Target scope that are included, just for reference, so that we get a whole idea of the picture here. Uh, next slide, please. Here, we're looking at a site plan, uh, showing the entire block between Fifth and Forbes Avenue. You can see that the northern portion indicated, uh, is the Target retail portion. Again, the loading zone is located just down the street on, along Smithfield. And, and as, as an additional note, again, not necessarily part of this project, but there is parking, um, at the basement level below the Target space that's accessible via Cherry Way. Uh, next slide. This is an enlarged plan view of the site along Smithfield, indicating the loading entrance that begins, uh, there's currently a, a right turn only lane. So where that turning lane ends is where the loading zone begins. The primary retail entrance will be located off of Smithfield. That's a grade level entry. And just around the corner, there's another secondary entrance. Um, it has a few stairs. Both of those, um, entrances are existing and, uh, will be maintained, um, in their, in their current state. Uh, with the exception of the main entrance, which will have sliding doors to facilitate, uh, the movement of goods and, uh, and people in and out of the Target space. Next slide, please. Uh, this is an enlarged plan view, looking at the Fifth Avenue portion of the site. Again, just indicating this, uh, existing secondary entrance. And then also a closer look at, um, Cherry Way on the right side, where you would turn off of Fifth Avenue or, or come, you know, via Cherry Way and enter the parking through that one-way thoroughfare through there. Next slide, please. Uh, the next few views are just, um, some contextual views to orient, um, location of the project. Of course, we see the clock prominently at the corner. Uh, just to the right, we see the primary entrance, where we'll have, uh, sliding storefront doors. And then to the left, looking up Fifth Avenue, we see the secondary entrance. Next slide. Uh, here's a closer view of the Smithfield primary entrance. That's about all for that. Uh, next slide, please. A little bit further context, uh, the Target space, uh, takes up about two, there's, there's a red vehicle parked about halfway up the street. Um, visible here is also the right turn lane, so where that vehicle's parked and that turning lane ends is where the loading area would begin. Next slide. Uh, this is a view looking down Fifth Avenue, uh, just to show the existing secondary entrance along Fifth. Next slide. So getting into the, the storefront portion, uh, as I mentioned, this is a big collaboration between our historical consultant. Uh, the project is being reviewed through the National Park Service and the State Historical, uh, Review Process. We had sort of a historic inspiration in the top right, uh, we have a photo from, I, I'm not sure the date of the photo exactly, but, um, there's sort of a five-part motif for the upper portion of these storefronts. Um, we don't believe that it was, uh, originally storefront, but, uh, as part of, uh, what Kate mentioned, bringing a lot of transparency to this, we'd like to open that up. So below that, you'll see our proposed elevation along Smithfield, where we've taken that five-part motif and created essentially a, a five-part transom above a large open storefront window. Um, there is some translucent decorative film that we'll get to in just a minute. Um, go to the next slide, please. Similar, uh, showing the proposed elevation along Fifth Avenue. Along this side, there are a few, uh, functional uses, such as a CVS pharmacy and the point-of-sale cashier station. Those are areas where we would have the opaque film that you, uh, wouldn't be able to see into the store through there. In general, though, um, most of the storefront is all, uh, translucent or transparent, and there are no, uh, large, you know, display cases or anything proposed to go in front of those windows. So as a pedestrian experience, you would be seeing deep into the space and really, uh, invited into, to see what's happening inside. Next slide. This is an enlarged view of a typical, uh, storefront panel system. They do vary a little bit, but in general, uh, the five sections on top that come down into a three-part lower system. The lower mullions are to be, uh, butt glazed, just to minimize the visual appearance and help that appear as a large expansive glass. On the right, we're working to create a custom aluminum storefront mullions. Uh, this would be based on the existing mullion that's, that's currently installed around the perimeter. We've taken a little bit of liberty to create something for that larger middle transom, um, but again, based on the historic precedent through there. And on the next slide, I think I'll turn it over to Doug, just to touch on, uh, Target's graphic vision for what these panels are and help get a better understanding of that.
Sure, Ryan, thank you. Uh, my name's Doug Bartolomeo. I'm a architect with Target Corporation. I'm joined by my colleague, Aaron Hemquist, today. Happy to be with you folks. Uh, very briefly, um, uh, Ryan mentioned the extensive amount of research they've done on the history of the building and the profiling of the new storefronts. From day one, when this deal was proposed to us, it really became all about transparency and visibility. The, the idea of the reverence for this building and the clock and the Kaufman's history in Pittsburgh is well aware to us. And, uh, you know, in addition to that, sort of the citizens' shopping experience of looking through display windows, especially at this time of year, is all something that we, uh, immersed ourselves in. So, um, what we've tried to do here, again, is to, um, blow open the height of those windows beyond what Macy's occupied for many years, opening up those upper transoms to, to clear glass to see into the big space. And the rendering we prepared sort of shows that fishbowl at night, the idea of this inner, inner space glowing with light from the inside. The clock, uh, element there that you can see caught our eye, particularly from the base of the clock, the beautiful bronze casting work as a floral motif. And the red translucent film panels that Ryan talked about are really just that. They're inspired by that clock base as a artistic graphic, um, um, abstraction, if you will, of that. And, uh, our, our desire was to s- show sort of the expanse of our space. We're, we're a small entity in a very big building, and to show that we go five bays on Smithfield and seven or nine bays on Fifth Street was important to us. Hence the, uh, use of two or three shades of red. But really, it's about branding the building with that clock motif and paying reverence to the clock, to Kaufman's brand, and the history of those two things in, in the pit, in, in Pittsburgh's, uh, culture and history. So we've, we've done these transparent films, um, in different ways on other stores occasionally where the need arises. But here, it seemed appropriate to have these vertical strokes that emanate a- away from the intersection, away from the clock corner. And it's just a little bit of touch of, uh, artistic branding, again, both for, for Target as well as, uh, the, the culture and the history of this site. Um, the white and gray film that you see there happens three times on Fifth Street, and that is, as Ryan said, the idea that we have functions behind there, whether it's, um, checkout cash registers right behind the glass, or in one case, um, a order pickup storage small room, and then in the third case, the CVS pharmacy, which would actually have a partition right behind that glass. So, uh, we've used the red branding and morphed that into a white and gray that would be more opaque to hide those functions that would be directly behind there. Thank you.
And the last thing I'll add about that is, uh, since this presentation was prepared, you'll, you'll notice there's a, a little bullseye that didn't make it out of the project. Um, that's no longer part of the design. Um, and we'll be, we'll update that for the, for the hearing presentation. But these are, these are limited to the floral print.
Correct. Thanks, Ryan.
Uh, next slide. Uh, a little bit, uh, at the functional end of things, there is some building infrastructure improvements that need to occur, and, um, this equipment needs to be housed within, um, an enclosed space to maximize its longevity and durability. And so we are also including a small mechanical penthouse that would occur at the, uh, I guess, the southeast corner of the Kaufman's Annex Building, uh, which borders along Script Way and is adjacent to the Allegheny Building. Um, it's approximately 20 by 35 feet and has about a 10-foot clear, uh, ceiling. And then there's steel joists and with a parapet there. Um, the height we're indicating here is about 17 feet at the highest point. Uh, next slide. Just to wrap up, uh, we've included the construction management plan. Due to the size of the glass that we're going to be putting in on that storefront, we will need to, uh, close the sidewalk for, while that work is happening. Uh, we're proposing some, uh, lay-down truck delivery areas happening where we have the, the main loading area, so that we don't interfere with the turn lane only there. And, um, you know, if there's further comment on that, Robert Fuller will be able to address those questions. Uh, next slide. And finally, just to recap, a, a few, uh, common points here. We are, you know, it's an existing building where we're fitting out the first floor, so we're not increasing any of the impermeable surface of the site. Historically, we are using an energy-efficient glazing material for the storefronts. Uh, in order to create a nice clean, clean slate, we're also, uh, doing some furring walls on the inside. So, uh, the energy efficiency of, of this space should be improved from what is currently there. There are, there are a requirement for street trees, however, the building extends fully underneath the sidewalk. Um, so we will, uh, make a payment in lieu of providing street trees. Currently, there are large planters along the, along the sidewalk there. Regarding community outreach, we did meet with the Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership as a meeting with our, our CEO on November 12th. It was a well-received presentation, and we had some positive comments from them, and are continuing that dialogue, um, in coordination with their plans for the Smithfield, uh, street improvements. And last but certainly not least, site accessibility is very important. As I mentioned, there is a parking garage below this. Uh, there will be two new elevators within the space. So, um, there'll be accessible parking, uh, through that garage, and then you would come straight up into the space via an elevator. If you are coming off of the sidewalk, the Smithfield entrance is at grade and would provide accessible entrance to the site from there. I believe that is it, so go to the next slide for a nice picture, and thank you.
Great, thank you for that. At this time, we take no public testimony, but we do have questions and comments from the commissioners. Commissioners, are there any questions or comments?
I have a couple.
Okay. Commissioner Dick.
Okay, uh, with reference to the secondary entrance on Fifth Avenue, my, my recollection of that comes in on a balcony, what used to be a balcony of, uh, Ca- Kaufman's. So I assume you're not trying to make that accessible from the outside, but are you going to make it accessible, that level accessible from the inside of the store?
Uh, currently, it's about two or three steps that come down to the main level. So that Fifth Avenue would not be accessible, but it, yeah, it's two steps down, and then, and that will all be on the same level. So there's no more, the, the balcony is, was framed out on top of the floor, so that's, it'll all be one level.
It'll all be one, okay. Thank you. And, oh, one, just one more thing, I'm sorry. You said, uh, you expect there's to be, be some street closures on Smithfield and or Fifth for the installation of the glass. How, how long a period do you think that will take to install that glass?
Uh, send that one to, uh, Robert. Would you like to comment on that? Robert, I think you're muted if you're there.
Um, it'll take about two workdays per opening, and there are nine openings.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions from the commission? Did you say, um, when you expected work to start, or when you expected to open?
Uh, we anticipate receiving the, the building permit pending, uh, Planning Commission approval on our, uh, January 12th meeting, around mid-January, and we'd be able to, to start then, but, um, Robert, is that an accurate timeline?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
This is Commissioner O'Neil. I just had a question regarding the street trees. I understand that there is going to be a payment in lieu, and then you also mentioned that there are the existing planter boxes. Will those remain?
I don't know whose planter boxes those are. They're maintained by the, the, the wonderful, uh, PDP caretakers.
Okay. So it's not your-
I don't know. Okay.
No, that was a question.
Oh, uh, oh, pardon?
Is that your, so it's not your intention to move them, as far as you know?
Uh, it is not mine. Uh, the builder would be best suited to answer that question, but, you know, it's, it's nowhere on my drugs to, to remove them.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you. We'll see you in two, no, we'll see you in the new year.
Thank you.
January 12th is the first meeting in 2021.
Okay, um, commissioners, the next item is B. Item B, DCP ZDR 2020 09 567, address 20 Stanwick Street addition, Ms. Kramer. And, uh, just wanted to let staff know that I have to restart my computer, and I'll be right back into the, uh, into the commission meeting, so, thanks.
Chairman Mondor, do you want us to wait for you?
Chairman Mondor, you're on mute.
Sorry, I ha- I will open up on another machine, but, um, watch for me to let this machine back in. Sorry for the logistics here. My internet is freezing, so I have to reset it, so. Go ahead and start, please, though.
Okay. Then I would, uh, this is application DCP ZDR 2020 09 567. Um, can I do a really quick sound check with my applicants, Abby Mountain and Kevin McKeehan? Can you just chime in to say that you're there, and then I'll give my brief presentation?
Abby Mountain is here, and I believe John Martin from Strata is also here.
Okay. Um, thank you. Uh, this is an application for an interior and exterior renovation and in addition, um, and a roof-tup-deck on the 21st floor of an existing 20, 22-story building. In case 199 of 2020, the zoning board of adjustment heard the request for variances for additional FAR and for additional height above the incline plane allowed in the GTC. This is within the GTC. I'm sorry, I should have said that from the beginning. Um, the decision from this, from the zoning board is due later in December, so we'll bring this back after we've gotten a decision from the zoning board, of course, for, for Planning Commission's hearing in action. The proposed building addition is to, uh, increase the floor plan, but not to increase the height. So, um, there, there will be some, uh, explanation of that, I'm sure, in the presentation. Um, the proposed design for the building was, um, reviewed by a design staff, and there are no concerns for that. The development activities, uh, meeting was held with a registered community group in here, that is, the Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership on September 10th of 2020. The report of that is in with your briefing report. With that, I'm going to turn, uh, the microphone over to Abby and John to make their presentation.
Thank you. That was a good overview. Um, if you want to move on to the next slide. So, um, this is showing which building we're discussing. I think everyone's pretty familiar with it. Um, and it, it's the the, like, diamond-shaped building in white there, and the portion that we are making any adjustments to is just on the roof and in, um, i- in and around that two-story ellipse penthouse that's at the top of that. If you want to go to the next slide. Um, so the blue portion is roughly the area that we're proposing bumping out of that penthouse. The penthouse, it, like I mentioned, is two stories, and we'd be bumping out at the first story, and then a little bit, um, there'd be no function at the second story, but the height of the floor-to-floor is pretty low there, so we'd like to make that, um, more than what the typical floor is at the penthouse. And then the green area is an outdoor deck, uh, roof deck space that we're proposing. Next slide. So this is just another view. Um, you can see it from, um, in plan view, the roof deck would be facing in towards downtown, um, really looking out towards PPG Place. And then the addition, um, looks out over the river and, um, to the southeast a little bit. Next slide. And then we just have a series of views sort of showing, you know, the, um, the addition and what it looks like from different views. So this is just another view. Again, the blue is the area we'd be building out, and the green is the roof deck. Next slide, please. So this is a plan. Um, you can see the outline of the existing penthouse that's there. And one of the reasons why we're proposing pushing out is, um, if you start, um, at the, let's say, I'm going to treat this like a clock. So at like 7 o'clock, that large space there is actually the condensing units for the whole building. And then as you move up towards like 10 or 11 o'clock, those are storage facilities and, um, the building, um, facilities manager's office for the building. And then over at like 1 or 2 o'clock is, you know, electrical and mechanical rooms. And the lighter gray places in the middle are the elevator machine room and elevator that gets you up to this floor, and then two stairwells, um, that are the egress down. So there's just not a lot of usable space at this level, um, of the building in order to, um, provide the space. I should have mentioned that the point of this space is to be, um, a lounge space and a break space for, um, one of the tenants. They are taking over four floors in the building, and, um, they're pretty compact in there. So this, they're seeing this as an amenity that all of their, um, employees could utilize and, and come up here for lunch or to have meetings or, you know, just take a break. So there is the portion, um, you can see the ellipse and the, the little bit that we're pushing out at, you know, 4 or 5 o'clock there, and then you can see a view of the deck. So there is 2,505 square feet of exterior patio that would be added, and that's the brown portion that's outside. We're leaving the rest of the roof, um, intact and alone. And then, um, inside there is, we're renovating 2,420 square feet, and we're adding 1,330 new square feet in that, that little chunk that reaches out towards the edge of the building. Next slide, please. So these are some elevations. There's not a lot to the addition. It's really just meant to be a glass box that protrudes, um, out of the existing penthouse a little bit. Um, the roof should be fairly clean. There'd be a few davits for, um, roof maintenance issues. Uh, but it's, it's very simple, and likewise, the deck is pretty simple, not much for built structures. There will be a windscreen that's glass along the edge that you can see in some of these views. And then, um, there, we are proposing a small trellis area along, um, the edge of the, um, the ellipse penthouse, and that'll provide some lighting, a little bit of shade, and, um, a potential place for heaters for, so that they can use this during the shoulder seasons as well. Um, it, this is probably a good spot to point out, um, what Ann mentioned, that we're not increasing the height of the building. You can see that our addition actually stays below the, um, height of the existing penthouse roof. Um, we took the variance slides out of here. But the, the reason why we need a variance is because the existing building already extends past the, um, I'm losing the words here for this, um, past the incline plane, um, that, um, was established after this building was built. Um, so the portions of the building already extr- extend out of that, and this isn't changing that extension. Um, and then likewise, the increase in FAR, you can see we're, we're adding, you know, 1,300 square feet to this 20-story building. Um, it's less than a tenth of a- It's less than a tenth of a point of change in FAR, but the existing FAR is already over what is now the current allowable requirements. So those are the two variances we're, we're going after. Next slide. So this is a view of the inside of the building. You can see that curved wall that's coming in. That's actually where the existing penthouse stops right now. So we're adding a nice, you know, a taller expansive space in there. The ceilings are awfully low in the existing space, partially because we have to add additional structure in here in order to get the loading for this roof to accommodate people up here. But you can see, you know, there's, we sort of mocked in views of Pittsburgh, but the views off of this space are really fantastic. And right now, the existing space is all completely enclosed and nothing is permeable. Want to go to the next slide, please? And then this is a view, slightly earlier iteration, but you can see here that the trellis, not a lot has changed with that. It's actually pulled back a little bit more. So it'll be slightly less visible. And then we don't, we're not planning on having planters along the edge now. It'll just be a clear glass edge to it. The deck is pulled back from the edge of the building about six feet, and that's to allow roof cleaning crews to continue to maintain all, or not roof cleaning, window cleaning crews to maintain all of their access to the facade along there. Next slide. So these are some of the materials we're looking at. Basically, the existing penthouse materials will remain. It's white. It's, you know, like an Eiffel sort of product. And that will remain. It'll be cleaned up in our areas. We're looking at aluminum decking, probably in a beige tone, and then some wood look aluminum for the trellis to maintain durability up there. Next slide. And then these are some views from, we put the model into Google Earth. It's kind of hard to see from here, but this is the view from the Grandview Avenue overlook. If you'll notice our building, the, the white building that sort of stands out over there by PPG Place, you can just barely see our glass addition. You see it better in some of the next views. So next, please. This is a view from the top of PPG Place, so they'd get a pretty good view of what's going on in the deck. But again, the addition is not all that noticeable. It's mostly rooftop and some class. In this view, I want to point out that the building directly to the left of this building is coming up in one of these slides. It's a residential building and you can see a little portion of deck there. And that's where one of the upcoming views is from. So next slide, please. This one. So this is standing on that deck and looking up. This is probably the closest that anyone will be to this addition and the most visibility that it would have. So it's, it's really just glass looking up into that slightly taller space, not quite two stories. And the, the lighting that's above there, and you can see a little bit of the trellis, nothing of the windscreen. Next slide, please. And then this is a view from the tower at PNC Place. Again, we just wanted to take some, some views from around the city and see if this was very impactful from people's views. So you can see our building in the distance there and a little bit of the addition and the deck. Next slide. Is that the last slide?
Yeah, either my computer's frozen or that's the last slide. I think that's the last slide.
It might be the last slide.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we take no public testimony. Are there questions or comments from the commission?
I don't know if you were just a little low for me. Just.
No, no questions or comments? Sorry? Nope. Okay, great. Okay, thank you very much, and we'll see you on the 12th of January event.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That takes us to Item C, which is DCP ZDR 2020 12234, Address 1323 Forbes Avenue, demolition. Mr. Gregory.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is PDP number DCP ZDR 2020 12234, located at 1323 Forbes Avenue in the Uptown neighborhood. This is an application for the demolition only of an existing three-story structure, referred to in the presentation as the former Life's Work Building on Forbes Avenue. This project is part of a larger proposal by Duquesne University as part of its newest social master plan, which does include a proposal to redevelop the parcel, this parcel in this 10-year development envelope. However, the IMP process, as well as that project development plan, will both come before the planning commission as separate applications. So right now, we're just looking at that demolition. There were no requests to the zoning board of adjustments part of this project. The applicants held a virtual development activities meeting with the two registered community organizations, the Hill Community Development Corporation and the Uptown Partners on August 24th, 2020. This was a larger DAM that discussed the university's overall IMP process as well as the preliminary plans for this site's redevelopment. This is before the commission as project development plan, as demolitions the Uptown Eco Innovation District do require planning commission review and approval. It's in order to be approved by zoning. So I'd just like to do a quick check to make sure that Duquesne's team is on and ready.
Maria Kierakopoulos here. I'm with WTW. I don't know, we should have Terry and Rod Dobish on the line as well. I believe they want to start with some preliminary comments.
The floor is yours.
Yeah, Mark Menosky, can you hear me?
We can hear you now, Mark.
Okay, I'll start the presentation. Except for Duquesne, we have Rod, Terry, Katrina, myself, WTW, Larry and Maria, Naralco Corporation, we have Corey online. Like to start with the next slide, please. This is the location of the Life's Work Building at 1323 Forbes Avenue. Next slide. You can see the, the building is currently across from our new UPMC Cooper Field House. And we purchased the Life's Work Building in October of 2019 for around 5.7 million. We're investing another 3.5 million in purchases and contracts. Total investment by the time we do the design demo, abatement, construction will be over a $53 million investment. Next slide. This is four different angles of the building. You could see most of the Life's Work Building is right up against the sidewalk on Ford's, McGee and Watson Alley. Next slide. This is the Life's Work demolition plan. Spectrum is currently performing the hazard material removal, which includes asbestos, light bulbs, ballaces, free-on diesel fuel, hydraulic oil. We have partnered with Naralco Corporation. They will be performing the demolition. And the plan is to install a perimeter fence from the curb line and around the entire parcel. Demolition will begin from the east and move west, which will be right to left on the plan that you're looking at. Demo includes the autoe done to the removal of the slab on grade and grade beams. Once we complete the demolition, we are going to backfill with an engineered fill material at a 45-degree slope along Ford's and Watson to support the foundation wall as we move into site work and into construction. Next slide. This is our schedule. And we are keeping the fire alarm and sprinkler system active, the elevator in general. We are also going to maintain heat in a Life's Work Building. We are four months into the hazardous material. It should be done by the end of December. And another thing we did is we kept the windows in the building. We did not want the building to look vacant over the winter time. So as we come back in the summer of 2021, in May, we will remove the windows. The glazing does contain asbestos. And then in June, we'll move into the demolition. That'll take approximately four to five months. Then we'll move into site work, followed by 17 to 18 months of construction of the new building. We plan to receive this certificate of occupancy in October of 2023. Coker's final site visit will be in December of 2023. Students' use of the building is anticipated by April of 2024. Next slide. This is a rendering of the College of Orthopaedic Medicine building. This is from the intersection of Ford's and McGee Street. Next slide. This is the south facade. As you can see, we brought the building up to be level with Ford's Avenue. You have a nice setback plaza, trees and concrete and seating. Next slide. This is a view from Watson Alley and McGee Street. Next slide. Now, William Gregory talked about meetings. You know, we had multiple meetings as part of our institutional master plan, which referenced the College of Orthopaedic Medicine. We had IMP development activity meetings. We had meetings with the Uptown Partners and meetings with the Hill CDC. Next slide. So between Duquesne and our consultants, we were able to answer all the review criteria items A through M. I'm not sure at this time if you want me to read through all of these answers or you're reviewing this already.
You don't need to, hold on a second. You don't need to, to read through them, but we have received this in our packet.
Yeah, and I know Terry led you into an updated, because we were missing answers to E, F, I and J. You now have them answers in your possession. Is there any questions?
Is that the end of the presentation then?
That is it.
Okay. Thank you for that. At this time, we do not take public testimony. Are there any questions or comments from the commission?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you. We will see you in the beginning of January, January 12th then. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
They say for everybody.
Okay, thank you too. Okay, that ends the briefing portion of our meeting. We will reconvene at 2 o'clock for the hearing portion of our meeting. Thank you. Holly, it's good to see you.
Yeah, thank you. I don't know what happened before, but I could not get the Zoom to work. Sorry about that.
You can turn your screens, your cameras back on as you come back in. We'll know you're here. And I just want to confirm, we have our court reporter in your setup. Hello, commissioners. Welcome back. Holly, it's good to see you.
Yeah, thank you. I don't know what happened before, but I could not get the Zoom to work. Sorry about that.
You can turn your screens, your cameras back on as you come back in. We'll know you're here. And I just want to confirm, we have our court reporter in your setup.
Hello, yes, this is Dylan Duran, our court reporter. Ready to go when you are.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, commissioners, if we're ready. This begins the hearing and action portion of the planning commission meeting for the eighth of December, 2020. This is the hearing portion of the planning commission meeting where we do take public testimony on items. During hearing, cases are presented for action by the planning commission. A reminder to presenters, please describe clearly which slide you are presenting to assist those who are participating via audio. I will do a roll call attendance. Commissioner Askey. Thank you. Commissioner Blackwell.
Here.
Commissioner Brown. Commissioner Burton Falk.
Yeah.
Commissioner Dietrich.
Here.
Commissioner Dick.
Here.
And Commissioner Mingo.
Here.
Commissioner Mandor here. Commissioner O'Neill.
Here.
Thank you. Okay, on items for agenda, we have five items. We have approval of commission minutes, correspondence, hearing in action, plan of lots, and a director's report. We begin with approval of commission minutes. Commissioners, we are in receipt of minutes from both November 10th and November 24th. Like to take two separate votes on those. So commissioners, assuming you have had a chance to read through the minutes for November 10th and have forwarded any changes, do I have a motion to approve the minutes as in our reports?
Sorry, which week?
November 10th.
So move Commissioner O'Neill.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Burton Falk. Okay, all in favor? Oh, wait, wait, sorry. Flashback to not being online. Roll call vote. Commissioner Askey.
abstaining.
Okay, Commissioner Blackwell.
Yes.
Commissioner Burton Falk.
Aye.
Commissioner Dietrich.
Aye.
Commissioner Dick.
Aye.
Commissioner Mingo.
Aye.
Commissioner Mandor, aye. Commissioner O'Neill.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Assuming you've had a chance to read through the minutes for November 24th and have forwarded any changes, do I have a motion to approve those minutes as sent to us in our reports?
So move, Blackwell.
Thank you. Second.
Second, Commissioner Askey.
Thank you. Okay, roll call for your votes. Commissioner Askey.
Aye.
Commissioner Blackwell.
Aye.
Commissioner Burton Falk.
Aye.
Commissioner Dietrich.
abstaining.
Commissioner Dick.
Aye.
Commissioner Mingo.
Aye.
Commissioner Mandor abstaining. Commissioner O'Neill.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that takes us to our second item, which is correspondence. We are in receipt of three items of correspondence. First item is DCP in regards to DCP ZDR 2019 address 1501 Penn Avenue, letter from strip district neighbors. And two items of correspondence with regards to the Mellon Park Historic Nomination from Robert Raska and from Melissa McSwigan. Okay, that takes us to items under hearing in action. We have five items under hearing in action. I will read through all five for those who are on audio. Item one is DCP HN 2020 00705 Historic Nomination 6501 Fifth Avenue Mellon Park. Item two is DCP ZDR 2020 06979, address 926 Liberty Avenue, renovation and dwelling units. Item three is DCP ZDR 2020 06481, address 32nd and Penn Residential New Construction. Item four is DCP ZDR 2019 0205, address 1501 Penn Demo and Mixed Use Construction. And item five is six-month extension of iPod 6 Inclusionary Housing Overlay District. We begin with item one, DCP HN 2020 00705 Historic Nomination, address 6501 Fifth Avenue Mellon Park. Ms. Quinn.
We actually may need to, if Sarah isn't here, there may have been a wire crossed. If she isn't here for this item, we may want to slide it back on the agenda.
Yeah, why don't we go to item two? Do we have the applicants here for item two? That's 926 Liberty Avenue.
It looks like they are here.
Okay, great. Okay, I will read through. Item two is DCP ZDR 2020 06979. Hold on one second. Thank you. It's zeros. Item two is 06979, address 926 Liberty Avenue, renovation and dwelling units. Mr. Gregory.
Good afternoon, commissioners. This is a project development plan, DCP ZDR 2020 06979 located at 926 Liberty Avenue Downtown. This is an application for the interior and exterior renovations of an existing five-story structure. Some minor exterior work as well as interior work to change the use from office to add twenty-three new dwelling units on the second to fifth floor. The first floor will only primarily commercial and is not part of this project, although there will be some empty space included bicycle parking on the first floor for the apartments. There were no requests to the zoning board of adjustment as part of this project. Proposed facade changes were reviewed in staff design review on August 7, 2020. And the applicant has addressed all outstanding concerns and there are no outstanding concerns at this time. The applicants held a virtual development activities meeting with the registered community organization, the Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership on September 10, 2020, and a copy of that report is attached to the staff report. This is before, this project is before the commission's project development plan as it creates new residential units downtown. At this time, staff are recommending that the commission approve the project with our one standard condition, which is the final construction plans, including site plans, elevations, and landscape plan shall be reviewed and approved by the zoning administrator prior to issuing the final record of zoning approval. Okay. And Joe, is your team ready there?
Yeah, I'm here. I don't know, Brent and Brianna, are you here? Probably not. All right. Yeah, I'm ready. Thank you very much, Will, and thank you, commission. We'll go through this fairly quickly. It's a fairly easy project. The existing building, if you're familiar with it, is at the corner of both Smithfield, Liberty, and Seventh Avenues. It is a zero lot line building. From vintage of 1901.
Excuse me. Excuse me a moment. I'm sorry to interrupt. I need to know, I need a speaker to identify yourself, please.
Oh, this is, I'm Joe Serau with TKA Architects. I'm sorry. I'm the project architect. You're welcome. Sorry about that. And basically, we'll start next slide. This is a view of the corner of Liberty and Smithfield. The exterior of the building, as Will has said, we will be replacing all the windows. We'll be replacing all the storefront and will be doing any repointing or any exterior work that needs to be done to meet the national park standards and for historic tax credits. So the building is as tax credit renovation on the exterior. The interior of the building is basically gutted as we speak. It will be converted into twenty-three apartment units. And the ground floor will be designated for retail and commercial space. Next slide. Here's a view basically along Smithfield. We'll be maintaining, again, everything that you see. That small lower stair that goes into the basement will be maintained. That'll be our trash area in the basement. That's how we'll remove our trash. Obviously off hours. But the other continued most important piece of the facade that we're going to be doing is we're going to be restoring the ground floor. Basically, the ground floor curtain wall or windows to full height. So that red band that you see there now on the, all the elevations will be removed. That will be filled with glass to basically restore to its original exterior view. Next slide. Here's the corner of both Smithfield and Seventh. Historically, this was the main entrance where it says Metro CS, I believe that's an old phone store, which has been vacated. There are no tenants in the building currently, just as a sidebar. So, but what we'll be maintaining is there's a small lantern on the side there that will be maintained. That'll be our new fire stair. But again, exterior renovation, pretty much what you see other than the ground floor restoration is what you're going to get when we're done. Next slide. Here's a full view of the Smithfield Street elevation where it says Shree's Food and like a little Coca-Cola. Uh, here's a full view of the Smithfield Street elevation where it says Shree's Food and like a little Coca-Cola sign. That'll be our new entrance into the apartments, uh, lobby. Uh, in that apartment lobby, as you'll see in the plans later on, there'll be a small lobby, uh, mailroom, bike room, and then the elevator. Next slide. Uh, again, this is the view where we're going to maintain, all the exterior openings will be maintained. This door will be the exit door for the fire stair. There's one stair in the building currently. And as we loop around, and this bay area here where you, where it says two lines for eighty dollars, that'll go away. And again, that entire storefront will be restored. And the lantern you see there, those are going to be restored as well around the entire side, entire facade of the building. Next slide. Uh, this is the Seventh Avenue elevation. Um, the existing fire stair will be maintained, will be repaired, uh, and will be reused. Um, as you can see here, again, uh, the doors you see there will be saved and that storefront will be restored. And the one panel, which is kind of the dark green panel on this elevation, will be removed and replaced with glass. Next slide. Again, here's a wide shot of the lower uh, Seventh Avenue elevation. Next slide. As we come around, here's the Liberty Avenue elevation, which we intend to be the main elevation for our um, retail and uh, commercial uh, tenant. Again, all the doors will be maintained, all the openings will be maintained, all that storefront will be removed and be restored again to full height glass. And all the windows will be replaced. And again, they'll be, they will match what's there currently. Uh, next slide. Here's a composite slide showing the full height of the building. Uh, this is a six-story building. Like I said, the uh, bottom again will be retail, top five floors will be all residential. Next slide. And as we loop around, again, this is the Liberty Avenue and kind of Seventh. Same thing, any, any, again, if there's any questions, please feel free to interrupt. Uh, next slide. And we're back to where we started, which is the Liberty and Smithfield elevate, corner elevation. Next slide. Uh, here are the plans uh, for the basement, uh, first floor, second floor, third floor. Uh, the basement will be basically service area, uh, water room, electrical vaults, trash, and some maintenance and uh, back of the house functions. The first floor plan, uh, where you see that kind of gold, uh, muted gold color, that is the entry lobby for the apartment building. Um, you can see the elevator there, uh, the existing stair, which will be renovated. And then you can see the lobby and then also the kind of the hatch area is the bike storage area. Uh, all the rest of the space will be designated for retail. Um, if you move to the second, third, second, third, fourth, fifth floors are identical. Uh, they're basically, um, what you see here is an al- alternating colors are basically one-bedroom apartments. Uh, with the lower apartment, uh, basically on a rounded corner, that is a two-bedroom unit. And they're self-explanatory. Um, next slide. Here is the fourth and fifth floor. Again, they're identical. Uh, the big change occurs on six where we basically create three units instead of four. Uh, and all, and those will become two-bedroom units. Uh, higher-end units, better view. And then the roof plan. Uh, right now, there's an existing large abandoned mechanical room up on the uh, roof. That'll be demo. So everything left on the roof, if you're looking down at the building, will be a small elevator penthouse. And then the mechanical units will be self-contained. Those are small basic condensers for each unit. Next slide. Uh, these are just blowups of the plans. Again, this is the basement. Um, again, what you'll see, I mean, sorry, this is the first floor. I apologize. What you see is all the kind of ochre color. It'll be the uh, commercial tenant. Um, and then the interior gold kind of yellow will be the lobby. Uh, mailboxes, you come in mailboxes, then a vestibule, in the vestibule, you enter through the vestibule, you'll have a corridor that takes you straight to the elevator into the fire stair and then the bike storage area. Next slide. Uh, again, typical floor. The, again, the circulation is in kind of like that brown, and then the alternating blues designate the different units, but they're all one-bedroom units at that point. Uh, next slide. Uh, these are the elevations. What you can see, only thing that's different from the picture, as you can see, is on the ground floor uh, where we replace the aluminum panels with glass. Again, to restore the building to its original intended view, which was nineteen oh one nineteen oh two version. I think that's it. Any questions?
Okay, thank you. At this time, we take public testimony. Is there anyone who would like to speak with regards to this project? If so, um, please indicate as such and staff will unmute you and it will take a minute. So please be patient while that happens.
Uh, no hands are raised at this time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, this time, questions or comments from the Commission? Okay.
I'll make one comment, Chair Mandor. Uh, I do appreciate taking the building back to its more uh, historic look, you know, the larger uh, lights, you know, the old gas lighting. Uh, I, I like that building. Uh, it gives me a little bit of a reminder, and I know this is totally off-base of the John Wick building, the hotel he used to go into, how it, you know, sort of starts at a point and and widens out and it kind of shows uh, historic Pittsburgh uh, corporate buildings, how they really fit into what the city was doing in the streetscape then, as opposed to kind of changing things. So the preservation piece of this uh, is the, is the real catch for me. So thank you for making that nice.
You're welcome. That was always our goal, to bring the building back to its original glory.
Great.
It shows. Thank you.
I second that, yes. Any other comments? Okay, Commissioners, do I have a motion to approve as stated in our report?
Yeah. Uh, I'm, I'll move that we do that. Having worked in this building for a year, I loved it, so.
Okay, great. Thank you, Commissioner Dick.
Then we approve it.
On that note, I'll second.
Okay, Commissioner Burton Falk. Okay, uh, we'll do a roll call. Commissioner Askey.
Aye.
Commissioner Blackwell.
Aye.
Commissioner Burton Falk.
Aye.
Commissioner Dietrich.
Aye.
Commissioner Dick.
Aye.
Commissioner Mingo.
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Mandor, aye. Commissioner O'Neill.
Aye.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Commission. Appreciate your time.
Uh, are we able to take item one again? Do we have that up yet?
Yes, I think we do.
Okay, great. So, um, we're gonna go back to item one, which was DCP Historic Nomination twenty twenty zero zero seven zero five. Um, Historic Nomination, address sixty five oh one Fifth Avenue Mellon Park. Ms. Quinn.
Um, please forgive me for being late. I had a bandwidth issue here at home, so I couldn't log in, but I'm here now. And um, I'm gonna go ahead and just present a brief summary of the nomination of um, Mellon Park. And that Mellon Park is a thirty-three acre city park located in Shadyside, Point Breeze, and the Squirrel Hill neighborhoods in the east end of Pittsburgh. It's roughly, roughly five miles from downtown and is comprised of land formerly of the estates of Mellon, Marshall, Scafe, Fru, and Darcy families. These estates were acquired by the City of Pittsburgh and unified into a city park in the nineteen forties and fifties while retaining aspects of their original architecture. Um, included within this park are areas known as the Mellon House site, um, the Terrace Gardens, the Walled Garden. There's Fifth Avenue Parkland. There is an agricultural area. There's Beechwood Boulevard Parkland. There's the, the Garden Center, former garage and service entrance. There's also, um, uh, Marshall Property, which has um, buildings for the Center for the Arts. And Anne, can you just like scroll down towards the end so we can see some photos? You just, just scroll through them. We don't, nothing specific, I don't think. But um, there's also the Scafe House and Garage and then the Fifth and Penn Recreation Area. So, you know, this is, this is a great park because much of this work was done by very famous landscape architects because it was done by wealthy members of the Pittsburgh elite. And now that it's all park, it can be shared with everybody in the public setting. So, um, we have those items. And um, a few others. There was the Cast Iron Fountain, which I think we come to. Um, and then the Rock Garden that was established in nineteen seventy-six. So that's, in a, in a nutshell, that's what the park contains. That's how the park was formed. Um, you know, Anne's showing us some great photographs of iron gates and such. Um, if you guys have any questions for me, I can try and answer them. But I think, you know, we covered a whole lot of information last time I was here. I really hesitate to go forward with all that again.
Thank you, Sarah. Um, sure. To just let folks know that the the entirety of the application is on the virtual Commission's website online, if anybody wants to review that. Um, at this time, we will take public testimony. Is there anyone who would like to speak with regards to this project? This application, excuse me.
Oh, and I, I'd like to, I don't know, um, if you all have mentioned this, but I can tell you that the neighbors are very much in support of this nomination. And I, just the HRC alone, we received roughly a hundred letters in support of this nomination. So, um, hopefully they sent those to you all as well.
So we'll wait, see if anybody's indicated they want to speak.
We do have hands raised for public testimony.
Okay, great.
Uh, Kathleen Farrington, you're unmuted.
Okay. Yeah, my name is Kathleen Farrington and I'm the president of the Point Breeze Organization, which is a local neighborhood group. And we're a registered community organization and within whose borders Mellon Park is situated. We strongly support a city historic landmark designation for the park. It's a huge asset to Point Breeze as well as to the surrounding neighborhoods. And it's been a treasured green space for decades as a place for sport, relaxation, family gatherings, and a wide variety of community events such as the Bach Beethoven and Brunch Summer Series and the Fair in the Park each September, which I assume will resume once we're through with COVID. Uh, at the prior meeting, someone asked if the work of the Herb Society and the Terrace Garden would be affected by this designation. They were assured that it would not, and this is our understanding as well. This year, the PBO applied for and received a Love Your Block grant from the city. Proceeds are earmarked for the Herb Society's use in the Terrace Garden. PBO has been working closely with the Herb Society to determine the best use of these funds as well as to plan a public volunteer event once COVID nineteen is under control. And uh, we strongly recommend that the historic designation for this park. Thank you.
Thank you. I assume we have some others to speak as well?
We do. Uh, Joe Siemens, you're unmuted.
Am I unmuted now?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, I'm actually Elizabeth Siemens, um, using Joe's Zoom account. I am the president of the Friends of Mellon Park Organization, which is very new. So it's wonderful that the Point Breeze Organization and the Squirrel Hill Urban Coalition are such strong partners with us in uh, asking for this designation and in really being extremely attentive to what goes on in Mellon Park. Mellon Park needs lots of work, but the idea that s- seemed to circulate in recent years was that it was sort of an abandoned space that nobody really cared about and that people could sort of do whatever they wanted there. And I will say that I, uh, my family and many friends and foundations fifteen years ago started with the uh, restoration of the Walled Garden in Mellon Park in memory of our daughter who we lost in an automobile accident. And that got us involved with Mellon Park fifteen years ago. And through this whole fifteen years, people have had lots of ideas of things they could just do in Mellon Park. And when we realized it had, it had less protection than a garage on uh, Samsonia Way, you know, or just, you know, something in a historic district that it, that the park had no protections whatsoever. Uh, we, we really realized that we had to um, to get to work for the whole park. And so, um, we, we've just been overwhelmed with the support in the community. It has been no work at all to get people to realize how much uh, how dear this park is to everyone. And it's, it's anything but abandoned. It's just beloved. And in COVID, you, many of you probably have an idea of just how much use and and necessity has shown itself in the park. So really, I, I also, people were worried about the Herb Garden. Uh, we are working, people are coming to us. The Herb Society has come to us, Rin Babson. And, and we have been in touch with the city, trying to get them to shore up the Terrace Garden and to talk to people about helping with the Terrace Garden. We, we ourselves are in no position to to do an investment to actually restore that. That, that's a huge project, but we we are aware and we're boosters for it and we are watching over it like mother hens over the whole garden, really, over the whole park. And um, I think you know that we have just a ton of support and Matthew Falcone and Preservation Pittsburgh did a fabulous job uh, with our application, which you have seen. So all we can say is we really appreciate your attention and what seems to be your care for this park and your shared awareness that it deserves the proper consideration for any kind of changes that go on there and the proper protections for the beautiful building architectural elements and landscape. So we really hope you'll get your, it'll get your approval and we thank you so much for your attention. Thank you.
Thank you. I assume there are others?
Uh, there are. Melissa Miller, you're unmuted.
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, good. This is Melissa Miller McSwigan. I am speaking on behalf of Preservation Pittsburgh. Matthew Falcone regrets that he was not available uh, to be here today, but uh, Preservation Pittsburgh does want to thank the community partners from the City of Pittsburgh, the Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy. And we really appreciate the strong support uh, from neighbors, uh, the Point Breeze Organization, Squirrel Hill Urban Coalition and uh, Friends of Mellon Park. Um, so it's really been, it's been an exciting partnership. I'm glad we all came together. You know, I think we all recognize the park is used by many different groups, nonprofits and individuals for formal and informal use. Um, needless to say, our Pittsburgh City Parks and Green Spaces should not be taken for granted. And I'm so glad we're, we're here today talking about, um, you know, Mellon Park. Um, and from a planning perspective, I think the last thing I really just want to say is that we believe, um, we at Preservation Pittsburgh believe the historic designation will provide a good foundation. we at Preservation Pittsburgh believe the historic designation will provide a good foundation for future park planning and any changes that may be necessary. So thank you so much and we're excited to be here. Thanks.
Thank you.
Cindy Berger, you're unmuted.
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me? Okay, so I'm Cindy Berger and I'm on board of Friends of Mellon Park. And I also have long-term supported the maintenance efforts in the Walled Garden. So in my opinion, the best part of Mellon Park is that much of what was given to the city as a park remains, including much of the designed landscape. More importantly, the land has not been built on and many of the landscape design plans still exist and can be used for restoring the landscape as was done in the Walled Garden. RB Mellon could certainly afford the best of the best. And we're fortunate that the city was the recipient of this really lovely location to be enjoyed as a public space. The recreational side of the park was also donated to the city by the Mellon family along with plans for its development as a recreational space, which has mostly been followed with periodic updates. There is much that is worthy of historic designation in Mellon Park. It's a quiet spot in the middle of a busy part of the city where anyone can walk and enjoy the landscape and gardens. And I very much hope that the planning commission recommends its historic designation. Thank you.
Thank you.
No new heads are raised at this time. No one who hasn't already participated.
Okay. Good. Thank you. Okay, at this time, we take questions or comments from the commission?
Chairman Mandor?
Yes.
As a Pittsburgher who takes great pride in and has a lot of respect for the history of Pittsburgh and much hope for its future, I recommend that we give historical designation to Frick Park.
Okay, are you, are you moving or are you just?
Yes, I'm moving and we accept the motion to make, give it a historical designation.
Okay. I was hoping to make a comment first.
And I want to say to Sarah and everyone to thank you for the wonderful information you put together. Sarah, the briefing was fantastic. And I want to thank our speakers who came in to speak on behalf of this nomination for someone who's lived here for 30 years over that time, many, many, many different kinds of visits to Mellon Park. And I think, as I said the last time, Sarah, I was surprised it wasn't already on. Thanks again.
And we can have discussion after your motion's made. So Commissioner Mingo, did you want to speak as well?
I did. I wanted to say, you know, thank you for putting this together. It's a beautiful, beautiful document. And I've spent many, many, many hours over many years in this park, both on the recreation side and on the historic side in so many different ways. And I've shared this document with many of my friends because often when I'm there as an architect, people keep asking me questions about this building and this space and how things happen. So I learned so much from your document and have sent it to so many people and will keep it on my computer to do so when people ask me questions. So the, the work is going to live on. I really, I really appreciate it. And it's a special place for me as well. You know, the playground across the street is where I've spent so much time. And the mayor, Mayor Paduto and many other people helped to sort of launch a program there to make playgrounds accessible for the entire city. So my, my two boys are also honored in that playground. So it is a special place of honoring so many people over so much time. So thank you very much. I appreciate it.
I have to say, the credit for the document has to go to the community groups that worked on it as well as Preservation Pittsburgh. They, they actually produced a stellar nomination, which unfortunately isn't as common as I'd like, but it was, it was wonderful. So good job, neighborhood and Preservation Pittsburgh for that.
Comments? Are there other comments or discussion? All right. Thank you to the community and to Preservation Pittsburgh. Commissioners, we have a motion on the floor to approve. Do I have a second?
Second, Blackwell.
Thank you. Okay, I'll do roll call. Commissioner Askey?
Aye.
Commissioner Blackwell?
Aye.
Commissioner Burton Falk?
Aye.
Commissioner Dietrich?
Aye.
Commissioner Dick?
Aye.
Commissioner Mingo?
Aye.
Commissioner Mandor?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Neill?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much to everyone who put that together. Okay, that takes us to item three, which is DCP ZDR 2020 06481, address 32nd and Penn, residential new construction. Ms. Racus?
Good afternoon again, commission members. This is an application for new construction in the Riv, the Riverfront Industrial Mixed Use District. This project requires one point under the bonus point system in the Riv and it's receiving that for transit oriented development because of its distance to the Heron Avenue Busway Station. The project has been through Stock Designer View and then went to the Contextual Design Advisory Panel. There are no outstanding concerns. You have that letter in your packet. A stormwater has been submitted for this project and is under review by staff. A transportation memo has been submitted and is under review by the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure Staff and that'll be a specific condition of approval. There was no development activities meeting required for this project. So staff is recommending approval with two conditions. One, that any final site plan comments from the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure be integrated prior to final site plan approval. And then the second, our standard condition, the final construction plans, including site plans, elevation plans, landscape plans shall be reviewed and approved by the zoning administrator prior to issuance of the final record of zoning approval. So that I'll make sure our applicants are on here. Sean, if you can just go ahead and unmute yourself so we can make sure you're there.
I am here.
Great. And you have your other team members on as well?
Yes, if you could make sure it will be Chris Harvey and Allison Taylor with Horde Copeland-Mott. Ryan and Divina. And then Cindy Janpaul to the extent she has any questions.
Hi, this is Allison Taylor from Horde Copeland-Mott. I think Chris, he's under Baltimore M1 is the, is the name he's under. It's a conference room. It might not be his name.
Okay, thank you. I think we just bumped him up.
Okay. And if that's not there, Monica Robertson, he's with Monica Robertson.
Can you hear us?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Okay.
Okay, great. Well, thank you so much, everyone, for your time. Up to the next slide. I'm Sean Kickline. I'm the principal of Oxide Real Estate Development. If you could flip to the next slide. We, I formed the company about nearly five years ago. After 20 years in the business with last stopping Arsenal, the Arsenal 201 project in Lawrenceville. Since then, I've done a number of smaller scale redevelopments primarily in Lawrenceville. Also a ground up mixed use, small scale development in the Arts District of Columbus. I am partnered on this project with Shift Capital Group out of Columbus, Ohio, who's done a number of projects of this scale. Some of these images are shown in front of you now in the short north and downtown neighborhoods of Columbus. Can flip to the next slide. When I, so the site that we're talking about today, what I really wanted to do was create a project that felt like potentially it could have always been there. We wanted it to really fit into the Strip District neighborhood. I, I had actually seen a project in Baltimore, which I thought was done phenomenally. I sought out Horde Copeland-Mott, who designed it to work with us and let Chris Harvey take over and talk a little bit about their background.
Hey, can everybody hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay, great. Again, this is Chris Harvey, principal at Horde Copeland-Mott Architects. And you can go to the next slide. So we recently completed the Glass House in Pittsburgh. This is right in the Station Square neighborhood, right across Smithfield Street Bridge. Phenomenal site. And it really got us kind of into the history of Pittsburgh and its different neighborhoods. And, you know, we like to really develop our projects and design them based on where they are. And that's what kind of Sean was alluding to. So Glass House has a lot to do with the history, not just the steel history and the industrial history, but this is actually where a lot of glass making occurred, turn of the century. It's had a great history to it. And we tell that story. We don't like to theme our buildings, but we'd like to kind of build that story and some of those ideas through the building and through the experience of the residents living there. And also the landscape, you know, this had phenomenal views back to the city. So there's a lot of planning. We work closely with the city. This was a large project to really be sensitive and create gateways and other things for this neighborhood. You can go to the next shot. This is completed now. We, we still got to get some finished photos of it, of Glass House. And just a few other shots, some of these are this Remington project, that upper kind of upper right and just the left of it, that's this project we did in Baltimore that Sean was referencing. Then, you know, even though these are kind of transitional neighborhoods, similar to our site, where things were gonna happen, you knew that the neighborhoods were gonna change. So we want to do a building that is respectful, again, to the history, tells a story. At the same time, they're of their time. They are modern. There's modern details that work through this. There's a spirit that kind of runs through this. We'd like to use materials that might be found, you know, that have tied to that kind of industrial nature. So that's very similar to our site. Bottom glass is a job in Dallas, the top left as well. It has that kind of same vernacular, that kind of industrial feel to it. You can go to the next shot.
We, we've assembled a full local design team to kind of bring this all to fruition. Most notably in Divina, whose offices are literally, literally across the street from the site. And Ryan's with us here today. If you could flip to the next slide. Yeah, this, this slide just gives you a general, like, high level overview of the project. We're in the Strip District adjacent to Lawrenceville. Again, we wanted to really create something that had this industrial, like authentic character. And I think Horde Copeland-Mott has done that well. You'll see that in later slides. Our number two goal was really to meet all of the requirements of the Riv District zoning. That included being within building height. We have, we have a 10-foot height bonus permitted. We're providing a setback at the top floor. We meet all of the parking and bike parking requirements. Our public entrance, you'll see, is along Penn Avenue. It really activates Penn Avenue in the corner. And what results is a boutique property. It's 114 units, amenity space. And what really drew us to this location is all of the alternative transportation options available. And we've really designed the building to maximize use and sort of like lower the threshold for tenants to be able to use all of those transportation options, as you'll see. And then you can flip this slide. Turn it over to Chris again.
Yeah, I'm gonna just run through the site. Again, most of the commission is aware of this location. And go to the next slide. Kind of just a big aerial shot looking back towards the city. You know, again, kind of on the edge of the Strip District. We love this site because it's really between the Strip and Lawrenceville. And you can just see the potential that's gonna happen. In this shot, you're seeing some of the amazing buildings that are closer to the river, like the Crucible Building. There's the Brass Lost Buildings right north of our site. Or yes, southwest a little bit of our site. And Penn Ave and 32nd Streets are the main intersection. And I think it's important to notice 32nd Street, you could see that becoming a gateway down to the river and future development that's gonna happen there. There's already a lot of things that are starting to occur. Go to the next shot. Again, just kind of an aerial looking down at the plan. We're gonna kind of dive into the plan. But I think what's important with this shot is we do not have retail. We wanted to accommodate, you know, as much parking as we could have at the same time to really animate that important corner of Penn Ave and 32nd. So we really loaded up. I'm gonna let Allison, our landscape architect, talk a little bit more about the detail of the hardscape and the landscape. And Allison, I'll talk a little bit about the plan when that first comes up. But again, you can kind of see this as a pivotal corner right there, brass building right across 32nd Street. Go to the next one. Just a bigger site plan showing it on its context. And again, you would mention, I think, a couple of previous projects that was a zero lot line condition and that is to our north, Penn Ave, that that's a property that we do not own, that somebody could develop. It comes up to us. And we'll talk a little bit more about that when we show you some perspectives and elevations. In Mulberry Way is an important, you know, it's, it's a service street in a way, but it's gonna be where our trash pickup is, where our loading occurs. And so we've been careful about how we treat that as well. Go to the next shot. So before Allison jumps in, just one thing I wanted to kind of speak to on this bigger plan is that corner, we do have an amenity space that I'm gonna kind of show in the perspectives. It's kind of on the upper levels because this does have great views, like we showed you those in those aerials, of looking back to the city, looking to the river. So we didn't put all of our amenity space on the ground floor, but we do have a kind of a lobby here that will have a package storage and a mailroom in some of our offices. But equally important is there'll be a little waiting area. We took our bike room, instead of burying it in one of the corners of the garage, we put it out right on 32nd Street. You can kind of see it there, right out 32nd. And then it's not labeled, but Allison will speak to it. But right where that number four is, that little room is actually our pet grooming station. You know, these are things that are social things that the residents will come down to. They might need to take a bike ride to walk their pets. So we like to really animate because we don't have retail. That will be full glass. You'll be able to look in. Those will be glowing at all hours. So it will be lit and animated. So there will be life on this corner. You'll see that in our perspectives that that was important.
Really activates that corner.
Yeah, that was really important. We have a great, great canopy there too. And where we do have the garage, we're gonna do some great screening right on Penn Ave. And I'll let Allison talk about some of the landscape and the richness of the hardscape around the building right here.
Yeah, so good afternoon, everyone. I'm Allison Taylor. I'm the landscape architect on the project and a senior associate at Horde Copeland-Mott. And as Chris and Sean have mentioned, our goals with the streetscape were to speak to the character of the neighborhood, create pedestrian, very friendly pedestrian space that makes it very easy to take advantage of the alternative transportation options and just be comfortable on, on the street. And the way we did that is using the paving and different paving materials, street furniture and lighting to really break down the scale and make it very pedestrian friendly. The paving is primarily the city standard scored concrete on Penn Avenue, 32nd and Mulberry with the standard clearance of five feet. We've accented that with paving bands, which you can see on Penn Avenue, which ties into the architectural articulation and creates a nice rhythm. So you're really connected to the experience there. That happens on Penn and 32nd. And then we've added some special paving and banding at the entry to the building and those socially active rooms, the bike room, really highlighting those spaces as special spaces and active. In terms of street furniture, we have four bike racks, two located on 32nd Avenue or 32nd Street and two on Penn Avenue. And that's in addition to the, the bike storage in the bike room. So again, making it really easy to hop on your bike and get where you need to go, if that's your choice. We also have planters and benches to add some texture and activity on the street. One in particular is, if you can see the number 10, that one is directly opposite the bus stop and that one will be covered. So you have a little extra protection and extra comfort while you're waiting for the bus. Again, encouraging you and making it really easy to use the alternative public transportation. The street trees are again spaced. The street trees are, again, spaced in, in line with the architecture, so they relate to the architecture and that banding, so they create a really nice rhythm with the architecture. We've added some planters, you can see on Penn Avenue and at the building entrances, again, just to make it more green, feel really lush, and break the scale down. And one of the most important things, as Chris mentioned, is locating the, the deliveries, the loading and trash on Mulberry Way, so those are not a part of the primary pedestrian and cyclist experience. They've all, we've also located a five-minute loading and delivery space inside the garage. So folks like Uber Eats and DoorDash, those sorts of things, aren't parking on 32nd or Penn Ave and in creating traffic problems.
Dedicated space within the building that they could drop off at, which we think is a nice added benefit.
Yeah, and I, I think Chris mentioned it, but also one of the really cool things, again, supporting the, the goals of encouraging folks to use alternative transportation and, and walk, is this transit screen that you can see on the lower right of the page. So that'll be located inside the lobby. So you'll, you'll have access in real time to when things are coming and going.
It'll give you real-time information on all of the bus lines running past the building, as well as the East Busway, and even Uber will tell you how, how far away the closest Uber is. So it's pretty great, kind of lowers the threshold, I would say, for like using those transportation options.
Yeah, and I think that is, that's a good summary of the landscape.
Great.
Okay, next slide.
These are just some contact shots, kind of showing the building. That's the brass building, you're kind of see that, that masonry building. And it's one of the nicer buildings, most of the buildings in this context, as you'll see, you'll see on the next shot, are a little bit more industrial, some of these gabled kind of shet buildings. There aren't a lot of one-story, you know, kind of industrial warehouse-type buildings that are also on Penn Ave as it runs down. But, you know, the Brass Loft is a really nice, kind of elegant building. And you'll see with our building, we're really trying to make a great neighbor for that. And it really has a presence in this neighborhood. You can go to the next shot. Again, just some of these kind of one-story buildings, as I mentioned, the bottom left is actually kind of at the end of our sites, well, it's not our site, it's the adjacent site to the north. And it's just a small building, it's a trophy shop right there. It's kind of surrounded by a parking lot. And some of the other kind of, you know, buildings that are in the context, more of the one-story type buildings. Go to the next shot. So we'll run through some of the elevations. And again, I think what's gonna be important, you can go to the next shot. What'll be important is really kind of showing you the perspectives we created, we showed them a couple of weeks ago, and shows a lot more of the character, but, you know, these are important. Again, our building is very simple, more of the spirit of some of the clean industrial buildings. We wanted this not to compete with the Brass Lofts, that's a more and more of an ornamental building with fortresses and more detail. So this is gonna have a lot of nice elements, it's gonna have a very strong base, which is a different color that you're gonna see, and then a real vertical proportion to this. And also important is, you can see on the top floor, we've set it back. And that was key, again, to keeping scale with the Brass Loft building. Create some terraces on the top floor, we're gonna have great views from up there. But also, when you're across the street on Penn Ave, you really don't see that, that's almost a 10-foot setback, and you really, that, that top floor is gonna disappear a little bit. So you'll see in our perspectives how the scale really helps with the scale. And then at the corner, far left, a really nice, but simple steel and wood kind of canopy that comes down, cable, cable tied back to the building. Yeah, and one of the things that we added, we mentioned it a couple of weeks ago, and Allison just mentioned some of those benches. You can see, kind of in the center of the building, at the ground floor, we, we did add a canopy. We said we were gonna do it, we're just adding a very simple, it's, it's, it just ties into the transom line of that kind of screening down below. Just a very simple canopy over the bench, and that's right at the bus stop. So we thought, that's kind of a nice little civic move, just to create a very simple canopy to protect that bench from rain. And that's right at the bus stop there. And again, as Allison mentioned, lots of, there's gonna be lots of landscape around this and, you know, bike area.
Trees, you'll have a canopy, it'll be a nice place to sit and wait for a bus, I think.
A little bit lower than our entry canopy, so it doesn't compete with that as well. You can go to the next shot. I'll just kind of move around the building, again, this is running down 32nd Street, you can see the garage entry, but you'll also see all that glass. When I was talking about the plan, and again, not having retail, a lot of times we do this on buildings just to really animate that ground floor and make it live. So right to the right of that garage entry is kind of the, the pet grooming area, which is actually a very popular thing these days in apartment buildings. And then the bike storage will be next to it, that's why you see those doors. So you can take your, take your pet right out from there, you can take your bike right out from there, those will be lit up. It'll almost be like a little bike shop right there. And then our, our main entry, right at the corner with the canopy to kind of define that. And again, you see mainly it's red brick, you'll see in our perspectives, a dark brick at the base. And then kind of a metal skin up at that recess at the top. Go to the next shot. This is just kind of wrapping around the building, this is going to Mulberry Way. And, and what we did on the far right is, we actually took our masonry and we kind of wrapped it around the corner and brought it back about 25 feet. And then we changed the language, where that metal is at the top of the building, it kind of drops down into the, this Mulberry Way side. And we just have, you know, it has to be a ventilated garage, so we have some nice screening to that. The loading area that we were referencing is actually gonna have a screen on it that can be shut to, for, you know, just for safety reasons off of that, off of that street. And then where you're seeing those balconies is actually the courtyard. You'll see that better in the perspectives, and that actually is gonna be wrapped, it goes from that kind of metal skin to a wood kind of veneer on it that's gonna wrap that. So that's gonna be this very warm kind of wood texture that is gonna be wrapping the whole side of that, that courtyard space for the residents, lots of balconies. Again, a little bit quieter, that's where we use all the balconies in that space there, a little, a little bit different vibe than Penn Ave. And really nice materials on this, aluminum windows, you know, real masonry skin, metal. You know, it was one thing our client really wanted is to, you know, showcase some very nice materials. No vinyl windows or, you know, vinyl skin on it or anything like that. You can go to the next shot. And again, not the, not the sexiest elevation, but this is the zero lot line condition. So again, there is the potential that somebody could build right up to this building. So we are bringing some masonry, even though that is the case, you can see right up on Penn Ave to the left, we're bringing some masonry, you know, at the base, we're kind of wrapping that dark masonry around, which is a more expensive masonry. And we're also bringing the red masonry and dropping it back about 25 feet from the street as well. So again, there's a chance this will all be covered up. And then it's kind of a, just a painted masonry unit where you're seeing that stippled area and the metal that's up on the top. So very consistent with some of the materials. But if you're driving down Penn Ave, what you will see, until this site is developed, you will see a big piece of that red masonry and that dark masonry, whether you're walking or driving down Penn Ave. You can go to the next shot. And again, just some courtyard views, different elevations. Go to the next shot. And we'll run into some of these perspective shots that kind of walks you through some of the views of the building. And obviously, this is the corner of 32nd to the left, Penn Ave, heading down with the bridge in the distance. And again, you can see that dark base, dark masonry base. You see a very clean articulation of the four stories above that. This is a podium building, meaning it's concrete up to that 15-foot level, and it's wood frame, type three above that, all skinned with masonry though. And this kind of canopy that is, you know, go ahead, Sean.
I was gonna say, I feel like this is a classic industrial aesthetic and it's what we wanted to achieve for the location. It's like, could it have always been there, does it fit well? We think, we think so, we hope.
And it's really, it's clean too, it, it has, it references some of these historic buildings, it's more detailed than that. There's some great mullion windows in this, we wanted the units to have big windows. This building will really illuminate. The building that Sean was referencing, Baltimore, at night, that just kind of glows. And it's a similar floor plan that we have in terms of the living rooms being out on the front, instead of all bedrooms, especially on Penn Ave, so it really will glow at night. It'll change the, kind of the vibe and the character of this, this little area here. And again, what's important is, the brass building is on the left, we think 32nd Street will become a important gateway as it develops towards the river. So we like the idea, again, this is a great, it's creating a gateway with the brass building. It's not outdoing the Brass Loft Building, but it's, I think it's a great neighbor to it, it complements it. And again, some of the things that Allison mentioned, you're starting to see is the planters, the tree pits, the bike racks, the benches, all that kind of richness is starting to show up. And you can even see that kind of, the bike room and even the, the dog grooming area that I was just mentioning as well. You're running down 32nd, you can go to the next shot. A little bit more of a detail, again, great kind of a detail of some of that banding and the richness of the brick right at this corner right here, which is important, and even some of the landscape, our canopy, which will have the name of the project right on it. And again, we really want you to see inside this, so there's a lot of glass, you know, right down at this corner, some great pedestrian scale lighting, not only on the street, but on the building itself, which will really give it a great scale, especially at night. As you know, there's not a lot of street trees on this little stretch of Penn Ave right here. So this is gonna really, hopefully, set a nice precedent for kind of a richness and a softness walking down the street here. And you can see even on the building, our spandrel panels are that same dark brick that we're hearing, you know, between the windows carrying up.
And we really want to encourage walkability from here, both to Lawrenceville and this, and this RIB District from our location, so.
Go to the next shot. Just a view looking back towards the Brass Loft Building, you can kind of see the scale, and you can also see how that top floor kind of disappears with that setback. That's what I was kind of referencing, that, that brings our scale down to be a little bit more in touch with the Brass Loft Building, to create that kind of gateway that I was referencing. But also, you know, a lot of, especially when you get to Lawrenceville, there's a real street edge on Penn Ave. And I think this area, other than the Loft Building, it really kind of breaks away, it's a lot of one-story buildings. You lose that great edge, that, that street edge that you find a lot in other parts of the Strip District, as well as Lawrenceville. It starts to pick up a little bit, so I think this is gonna create a good, a good wall here and also be welcoming. You can see at the lower level, besides the landscape, you know, that is our garage right there. And it was very important to the city that we were screening that garage, but at the same time, letting a little light through, so we've submitted kind of a, an aluminum screening. You're carrying the mullion pattern from the windows, it was kind of that, that tripartite kind of language. We're carrying it right down into the mullions, it is the frame for the screening, and then it's gonna be an infill. So it's gonna screen the vehicles, but at the same time, it'll get a little bit of glimpses of light and activity back in there, which, which is important, we didn't want to completely make it dark and blank. So it was, we've been very careful on how we selected that material.
Right.
You can go to the next shot. Again, this is kind of wrapping around down 32nd Street, our vehicular entry. You can see the, the loading area there down Mulberry Way, and you can kind of see the door, that that'll be closed off and the kind of screening that exists. But we are bringing our lighting down there, we even think, even though this is almost an alley or a service area, that it's still important to make it feel comfortable, and we're gonna have residents in a courtyard back there. So we wanted it to feel safe and comfortable, you know, as you move down Mulberry Way. You can go to the next shot. Again, kind of an aerial view, it really shows that setback, it kind of shows looking down 32nd towards the river, some of that detail on the hardscape, you know, right at the corner there. And what's really nice, on that corner, the top floor, I mentioned, an amenity space, that top floor corner is actually an amenity for the residents. So we, we put about 1,000 square foot room up there. It has a great terrace because of that setback, and really phenomenal views. We're a little bit taller at that level than the Loft Building, so we're kind of looking it over, looking back at the Strip District and the city beyond. So we're really excited about, you know, that, that perch up there. The rest are kind of just terraces for units up there. Go to the next shot.
You can, and one thing to point out now is, per prior requests and comments, we are showing the scale of the existing building, not immediately adjacent to us, but like two blocks over, which is the Trophy.
Yeah, that was something, I think, two weeks ago, that you guys had mentioned, you know, getting in some of that context. So we added more context to these perspectives. You know, that Trophy Building is a very small building, it's surrounded by a parking lot, but I think it was important to just put a little bit more of that in, so we, we did include that a lot, it's a good point, Sean.
As well as the bridge, kind of gives you some context, I think, we weren't showing that previously.
Yeah, and again, like, when we did the, when we did the Glass House project, you know, the bridges that surround the building are all part of that aesthetic and that industrial vibe in the buildings. We really like that. And you can see here, that kind of top floor, which is this dark metal material, will drop down at Mulberry Way. And then to kind of warm it up for the residents, we, we created this kind of inner courtyard of this, as I mentioned, a wood skin inside there. It's a semititious product, product that is, it'll look just like wood. So it's kind of a, this little wood box that's been carved out inside, it's gonna have a great little green lanthorn space down at that podium level.
It's almost like a visual refuge as well for tenants, and then buildings across the street that could look into it.
Yeah, and it's a quieter, a quieter street, that's kind of, you know, some folks will love to be out on Penn Ave and the activity of Penn. Some residents will love to be back here, where it's a little bit quieter, more private, and they're looking into this kind of green courtyard. So, you know, this, this building will offer different kind of experiences to the residents. You can go to the next shot. Again, just another shot, looking down, showing the setback. You know, we kind of have this as a placeholder, I thought, I think the thought, you can also see that brick returning, the black brick at the base, the red masonry brick, you know, on those upper four levels. That's zero lot line condition, go ahead.
Main, main point on this is that as you leave Lawrenceville and enter to the Strip, we may have some sort of like mural or artwork opportunity on the building.
Yeah. Which, you know, as you know, there's a lot of that starting to happen, and, you know, could we pick up on that? This would be a great facade to potentially do that. Okay, you can go to the next shot. I think this was the final perspective, and we wanted to include this, because this is like the real deal. This shows the telephone poles, the streetlights, it shows the real context of what is down there in the Strip District. And it, and it feels like it really fits in, and you can see the brass buildings to the left. There's a very strong basin, cornice line down there, we're picking that up with our canopy and that dark masonry base, and kind of bringing that right through our building. And again, it doesn't have all the articulation, but it's a very good neighbor, it's setting up this kind of portal or gateway, if you will, hopefully, into 32nd, or down 32nd Street as it develops. So it gives you the, kind of the full feel of the building here. Anything else, Sean, you want to add to this, Sean?
No, I think that was well said.
Because, go to the next shot. And I'm gonna let Ryan from Indovina, who's the architect, literally in the Brass Factory Building, Brass Loft Building, kind of explain some of the constructions and documentation in the next few slides.
Afternoon, everybody, I'm Ryan Indovina, Indovina Associate Architects. We're excited to be part of the team here and, you know, work on this project and carry it to fruition. Certainly, it's a fantastic project, and we're excited to have it next door to our, our building. So as was mentioned, I'll go through sort of the marks or construction next level process of the project. This slide was presented at the last iteration, so this is the construction management plan as prepared by Rycon Construction. Quick overview, providing construction, construction fencing around the entirety of the site. They will allow full control of 32nd Street, it's a fairly tight street with no, no sidewalk or side parking on either side of the street, so that will have to maintain its, its full width. An avenue will be restricted slightly, it's currently sort of a parking buffer along that portion of the site. However, it being a existing full curb cut with the gas station that's there, repair service station that's there now, no one parks there, but certainly there is accessibility in that pink area for a curbing closure. The sidewalks will be closed on both 32nd and Penn, so the construction manager will work with the city to identify crosswalks, either at the opposite side of 32nd, on the downtown side, or further up towards the 33rd Street intersection at the railroad trestle. If you want to go to the next slide. A couple of points to, uh, to discuss in a little bit more detail, um, that were requested at the previous briefing, um, as it relates to stormwater management and then the energy performance of the building. This being in the Rivian U District, we are required to, uh, achieve at least one point for that six story. And as such, we are doing so with a vegetated roof system. That would be an 8,500 square foot, uh, six inch minimum soil media, um, layout. And as you can see, it's dashed in over the survey here. Uh, that ultimate 8,500 square feet will have to be coordinated with the rooftop mechanical units, um, and sort of the overall layout of the building. Um, we will certainly be providing that to achieve, uh, the necessary onsite storage. The calculations in the upper right corner indicates, um, the required, uh, volume capture of 1,866 cubic feet, uh, at the one, two, five, 10, 25, 50 and 100 year storms. And then our related, um, captures. So in this case, we have 1,866, uh, required and we're providing 1,934 cubic feet stored onsite via that, um, vegetated roof system. The other point to discuss is energy performance targets. So this obviously being a large scale building, um, and the focus on sustainability, uh, in addition to its architectural appearance and aesthetic. We looked at the, um, taking a baseline, uh, energy use intensity calculation, uh, breaking it into the residential portion of the project and the garage portion of the project and calculating it based on, uh, baseline EUI versus proposed EUI. And we're able to, uh, achieve a 14% reduction on energy use. Um, that would be achieved through, uh, the, uh, proper use of, um, uh, the HVAC system in the building, uh, along with the, uh, high performance extra wall assembly. Uh, we typically, as we progress through the design, we'll use the woofy energy analysis or actually non-energy analysis, excuse me, the woofy exterior envelope analysis program to determine the, the best way to set up the exterior envelope. In this case, we'll have the masonry veneer over continuous insulation system. Um, and then a, uh, you know, we'll have a stud assembly and we'll identify the extent of internal spray foam insulation that will be needed within the stud cavity to maximize the energy performance of all facets of the exterior of the building. And go to the next slide. Please. Uh, another, uh, point to make, uh, so the project is a total 114 units. Of those 114 units, three will be full, uh, anti-type A units. The remainder will be type B units. So they'll all be accessible convertible type, uh, B units. At the ground level, as was described, uh, in detail in previous slides, uh, the bulk of the public entry areas are on the, the 32nd and 10th Avenue corner. So we'll have a primary entrance, uh, to the lobby fully accessible, uh, accessible exterior entrance to the bike room. Likewise, accessible entrances from within the garage, both to the common shared lobby and to the, uh, to the pet station area, which has both an access from the exterior and internal, uh, parts of the building. The remainder of the portions of the project, um, that you see sort of in the blank areas and the corners would be mechanical rooms and would not, uh, would not need to have public access. Uh, come to the next slide. I'll turn it over to Sean quickly to mention the, uh, discuss the, uh, community outreach.
Just brief overview, we did reach out to immediate neighbors and starting in like late 19, and then also began our conversations with the strip district neighbors, um, which ultimately resulted in a, uh, letter of support, which you see here. Uh, next slide.
And then I'll take, so again, the, uh, final slide is just an, uh, uh, analysis of the site, um, that we ran to understand the shadow implications of the site, uh, to do adjacent parcels. Um, obviously, as we mentioned, there's not a lot of high buildings in this neighborhood and this would be, uh, introduced as one of the larger buildings in the, in the area. Um, however, its impact on adjacent properties at this point would be negligible due essentially to its sighting. Um, its primary impact would be on the single story light industrial building that is further along on 10th Avenue. Uh, but again, the remainder of the, of the surrounding properties would not be affected by, uh, building's height. I think with that, uh, that concludes our presentation.
Appreciate the time. Open any questions?
Okay. At this time, we take public testimonies or anyone who would like to speak with regards to this project.
Uh, no hands are raised at this time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, at this time we have questions or comments from the commission. I wasn't at the last, uh, at the last commission hearing, but I understand that you came back with some, um, additional materials. So I thank you for that.
Absolutely.
Any other questions or comments?
I think I had some questions last time about, um, Domi, um, but I think that I've gotten answers to those. So I don't think I have any more questions. And I had asked about, um, that street intersection. And at the last meeting, I was, uh, incorrect in thinking that was the place where Penn Avenue turned from one way to two ways. It's, it's not that block. So, um, it seems much more straightforward and I, uh, I, I think that Domi, I don't know if there are any other comments that staff wants to make about the Domi issue, question I have, but I, I think I answered it. So thank you.
Okay.
I just had a comment that it being a born and raised Pittsburgher and seeing a lot of recent development as part of planning commission, I think it's a beautiful culmination of old new Pittsburgh and it's refreshing development, a building that kept the brick and the glass and landscape. So I just had a comment after seeing a lot of developments that are similar, um, and not a lot of brick. It, it's nice to see a building that is nostalgic, yet welcoming to new development. So this is Commissioner Blackwell. I just wanted to make that comment.
Thank you, Dina.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the commission? Don't have a motion to approve as stated in our reports.
So moved Blackwell.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second, Commissioner O'Neil.
Thank you. Okay, uh, we'll call vote. Commissioner Askey.
Aye.
Commissioner Blackwell.
Aye.
Commissioner Burton Falk.
Aye.
Commissioner Dietrich.
Aye.
Thanks. Commissioner Dick.
Aye.
Commissioner Mingo.
Aye.
Commissioner Mandor.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Neil.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, that takes us to our third item, which is, or our fourth item, excuse me, which is DCP ZDR 2019 020151 Penn Avenue Demo and Mixed Use New Construction. Ms. Rakes.
And before Ms. Rakes starts, I will be stepping out and recusing due to my involvement with the project. Thanks.
And commissioners, I may have to step out briefly, um, i- in the next two items at some point, depending on how long they go, so.
All right, thank you. Uh, this is an application in the Golden Triangle Sub District B for demolition of the existing structure and new construction of a mixed use structure. Uh, this project was before planning commission, um, for hearing on September 15th of 2020. On the planning commission denied the application at that point and encouraged the applicant to continue to work on the building and site design and return to the commission. Uh, since then, the applicant has worked to revise the design, including, including revising the open space at ground level and also breaking down the overall massing of the building. And the building has been, uh, backed to seat up as well. And you have the designer view letter in your packet. If you recall from, uh, the previous briefing, there was issues about the, um, project meeting, the definition of urban open space. Uh, so since then, in the current design, they've added the bleacher seating along Smallman. They've widened the walkway under the colonnade and they've added a mid-block accessible ramp, uh, and widen the plaza. Uh, so while staff does generally still have concerns about open space under a colonnade, uh, we are comfortable with the current design that's meeting the definition of urban open space. Uh, so as part of the previous review, they had, um, submitted and received, um, approval for their transportation study, for their stormwater plan and for their floodplain application. Uh, we'll just check in, uh, with all those reviewers and just make sure everything is still in compliance with the changes to the current design. And a development activities meeting was not required for this application. Uh, so staff is now recommending approval with two conditions, uh, very similar to the last project. Uh, the first one, any final site plan comments from the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure be integrated prior to site plan approval. And then our standard that final construction plans, including site plans, elevation, landscape plans shall be reviewed and approved by the zoning administrator prior to issuing the final record of zoning approval. All right, so let me check in on my applicants here. Dusty, I saw you there. You want to do a quick audio check and make sure we can hear you?
I'm here.
Perfect. So we have, have your other folks in your team as well, hopefully. So I'll turn it over to you guys to make the presentation.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I, I had a question before we get started. As you have seen this project quite a few times now, I was wondering if we needed to make our full record or will you incorporate the record from the prior hearing and briefing?
I think that your application stands and that we do not need to hear the entirety of the presentation, understanding that all the material that you've previously presented is also part of the submitted application, if that answers your question.
Yes, thank you very much because we do have, um, our stormwater, uh, information here with Langen engineers and we have Cindy Jampal. It'll be the same information you heard. We will have them standing by for questions, but I know you've had a long day already and I didn't want to repeat the testimony if it is already part of your record.
Much appreciated and, and I hope that you can hit the points of differentiation between the last presentation and then refer to anything that's just, um, remains the same and we can ask questions if we need to about that.
Okay, thank you very much. So just for the, uh, court reporter, I am Dusty Elias Kirk from Reed Smith, representing the developer 1501 Penn, JMC Holdings. Last time we were here, we were, uh, denied without prejudice. We appreciate your, uh, doing that and letting us work with city planning and CDEP to bring this to a different level. The ownership did go to work and they changed the design massing. You'll hear about that. And they did change the urban open space. So we really want to again, thank you for your cooperation in this regard. So as you, I think, know, this site is at the beginning of the strip district by the 16th Street Bridge. It's in the Golden Triangle, the zoning district. And when we looked at the history, as I think we told you before, this was to be a transition area between downtown and the strip. And I think that you'll see with the changes we have made, that we have honored that as a tr- transition area. This is the first building, I think, going to be built in that transition area. So you'll, you will hear that we meet that criteria. And with me today is Matt Casson, who's one of the principals of JMC Holdings, Brandon Haw and Zach Cooley from Brandon Haw Architects. And I, as I said, Cindy Jampal and Ben Hunter are here from Langen. If you want to hear from them as well, but I'm going to turn this over to Matt for a brief second.
Hey Dusty, it's Matt. Did you just introduce me while I was being, uh, led into the meeting?
I, yes, I did. Matt, you're on for.
Terrific. Um, thanks, Dusty. I'll be quick. Um, I, I just really wanted to thank everybody for having us back today. We really appreciate it. As Dusty mentioned, I'm Matt Casson, one of the principals of JMC, the owners of 1501 Penn. Um, you know, I think as we said in one of our earlier meetings, um, we are, uh, very interested, um, uh, in Pittsburgh as a market. We've been invested in, in Pittsburgh since, uh, 2016. We own the Pennsylvania, which many of you may know. Uh, we also own some other properties, uh, closer to the airport, between downtown and the airport. So as, in regards to this project, I really just wanted to, you know, thank everybody on this, this panel today for the collaboration. I, I truly believe that, uh, uh, that result for us is, is, is a better building, um, which I think is, you know, indicative of the process that we've engaged in here. And, um, you know, really appreciate you'd allow us to come back today and present, uh, some of the changes that we've made as a result of the feedback we've received. So with that said, I think it's a good time to turn it over to Brandon Haw and, and Zach to walk me through those changes. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Uh, can everybody hear me okay? Take that as a yes.
You're good. Yep.
Yep, okay. So my name is Brandon Haw. I'm the, uh, design architect for the project. I'm on the call with, uh, Zach Cooley, my associate partner as well. And, uh, again, uh, just to reiterate, we appreciate the process, uh, that we've been going through, both with staff and with your good selves and the whole of the community and all the stakeholders involved. Um, and as Matt said, I think, um, we listened very hard. We took a particular approach, as I've spoken about at length in the past, when we've, uh, presented this project, you know, one, one can, uh, push so far and, um, we made some decisions along the way. And here we are again, having listened to the feedback, uh, in what has been a very dynamic, uh, process. So with that said, let's go to the next slide. Just as a reminder, we are in the Golden Triangle Special District B. As Dusty said, we're the first project, uh, to be part of this special district. And we are also in the floodplain, right on the corner there, um, which is significant to how we have been dealing with this open public space. So let's go to the next slide. Just as a, as a reminder, um, we are aiming to be a gold lead certified building and I'm very pleased, you know, particularly coming from, from Europe, uh, where this has been a, a more extant system for many years for office, commercial office developments. We are incorporating an active chill beam system, uh, which is healthier and highly much more, uh, energy efficient for the building. We're reducing water consumption, which is important with low flow fixtures. We're improving that air quality, as I mentioned, um, with the chill beam system, which leads on to the sort of the well certification, you know, improving the air quality for, um, the building occupants as many, as well as the many other, uh, well attributes that we will be incorporating. Smart material usage, um, I touched on this before, using local, local materials and vendors as much as possible, um, and trying to keep down the, um, the, uh, carbon footprint of the construction materials for the project. And then excellent stormwater management. We haven't changed that from previous, even though the massing has changed, we still have the same, uh, criteria that we're meeting and we can talk about that or Ben can talk about that from Langen, uh, if necessary later. Let's go to the next. So design changes since, uh, September. Let's go through those, the next slide. Really, you know, four items here, break down the tower massing and the scale. That was one of the key ingredients. Articulate the tower cladding to a greater degree. And, uh, and then enhance or think about how the massing at the top of the tower is handled and then address and reinforce the public open space, particularly along Smallman Street. Let's go to the next. So from my sketchbook at the time or just after that meeting, um, you know, I wrote down, you know, breaking down the massing in the scale, uh, which we have done, um, articulating the corners and the cladding, um, as well, so that we, uh, by, by articulating the corners, we create a, a, a more slender looking building, less bulky, less horizontal, but nonetheless take that 10-foot, um, high glazing panel instead of being on the regular old planning grid, uh, take it to an eight-foot planning grid instead, which enabled us to take that same sheet of glass and turn it on its side and incorporate a two-foot six, um, as it were, knee wall, uh, glazed panel and a two-foot six clear story glazed panel and a wider, more horizontally articulated glazing system. And then finally, item three is really addressing that bleacher seating and the seating along, uh, Smallman Street to take down, you see the little cross in the bottom left to take down the knee wall that we were, uh, keeping as part of the existing, as you recall, Wally Building, uh, foundation, uh, that, that prevented us from taking that bleacher seating all the way through the whole length of Smallman Street. So having sort of reversed that. having sort of reversed that need or that desire, we could then open up that that frontage to a more relaxed and more publicly friendly transition between the street level and the upper level, which is, as I'll come on to there for the floodplain reasoning and the retail frontage. Let's go to the next. And then similarly, from the sketchbook, as it were, you know, just looking at where we were before, the height of the seven stories of car parking that matched the original cornice line of the Wally Building and which was very important to us to maintain that street wall scale, as you recall. Then the 21 foot high separation and then we had 12 floors of offices above that. And then taking that and thinking, well, okay, so let's, let's start to articulate the scale and massing and form of the building, but still maintaining the structural grid, the way the lightweight structure comes down is a very lightweight touch on the existing foundations of the Wally Building and preserving the efficiency of the car parking. So we didn't really want to mess with the core and many of those highly technical coordination issues that we had had in the design process. And so what we thought would be, would be to create the sort of pinwheel of four quadrants with the corners just cut away very slightly to further slender what effectively becomes four distinct volumes, four distinct towers separated out by double height green terraces so that every, every office user or tenant would have access to two two terraces. Each terrace is 220 square feet. There'd be buxus planting, which is a very hardy hedge material, very wind resistant, would be irrigated. And those double height terraces help to break apart the volume of the building plus give these external terraces for the building tenants, particularly in the post COVID world, even more important and more in demand. And furthermore, you know, to articulate those four quadrants. So we go to the next. The, and we go to the next, the base perspective of a drone looking back towards the downtown area, as Dusty said, a transition building as the zoning moves across from downtown into the strip district. And this will be the both the first building and also the last building, as it were, of that district. And this is how we were before you notice the green roof at the terrace, first terrace setback level and the green roof at the very uppermost top roof level. The only green roofs in this photograph, I might add, you know, there's a lot of tarmac and a lot of roofing material there, but not much in the way of water retention and green roofs. So we're hoping this will set a good precedent for future developments. Let's go to the next. So we transitioned from that massing to this massing, perhaps the green is in a beautiful sunlight, the renderer kind of took some liberty just to articulate the fact that these green terraces will be seen from distance and also the terraces going down to articulate the four quadrants. So we stepped down, we elected to step down towards the strip district. So that's above the podium level. It's 10 story high. Then the original 12 story high. So each lift of the podium, sorry, each lift of the tower, as it pinwheels around the central core is two stories high. So we go from 10 to 12. And then towards in the far distance, towards the strip, the downtown area goes up to 14 stories. So it's the same overall area for the building, but just articulated in a different way, as I've explained. So let's go to the next. So the basic elevation there, again, you see the seven stories of car parking that hasn't changed from previously, the two upper floors are still the 13 foot floor to floor. So they can be converted in the future if necessary. You see the double height terraces articulating the four quadrants. And then you see how it steps from 10 to 12, from 12 to 14 around the center core is the sort of the pinwheel spine of the building. Let's go to the next. In terms of the overall area, it's still well below the allowable FAR of 13. We're at 9.58 FAR still some 200,000 square feet. They're about less than would otherwise be allowable on this site. But significantly also, in terms of dealing with the the open urban area, we've increased that from the previous presentation by 33%. So another third on top of where we were. And that's 13% greater than the 10% requirement of 5,000, nearly 5,800 square feet. We're now at 7,750 square feet. So let's go to the, to the next and we'll come back to that in a moment in the presentation. So now this is a view looking down Smallman Street, you see 1600 Smallman on the left of this slide and the terminal building on the right of this slide. We are enhancing that color, the, in an abstract way of the sort of terracotta or rusty steel, whichever likeness you want to give it. But we really think that abstraction of the color will help create that transition and abstraction from what one feels and notices in the strip district is this brick that people often refer to. But on the other hand, this is a still building. It's a contemporary building. And we feel that the cladding systems are appropriate to this transition of a contemporary building for the next generation. But nonetheless, realizing that there is a context here. You also notice in this, this slide, the, the green roofs, the green terraces, both the uppermost roof level, the way it terraces back and the intermediate floor terraces cascading down the front of the building, the little intented corners. And then the cornice line, which I always try to emphasize in terms of urban scale and urban street making to give that field of context in relationship to the other buildings and other future buildings of the district. Let's go to the next. So this is now a view looking down Smallman Street from Homewood Suites. Again, the cornice line running all the way down Smallman Street. You see the bridge just there coming in on 16th Street. Then the setback level with the curved glass that's set back from the green, the greening of the edge there, which we've enhanced. You also start to pick up in these views now the more horizontally based extra articulation of the glazing panel itself, the eight foot wide module and the broken down scale of the building. Let's go to the next. Just in greater detail there, you see the eight foot wide panels again with the two foot six high knee wall and the clear story above that, giving the extra horizontality and extra articulation to the glazing. The indented corner, we still have the 10 foot plus or minus clear height for the ceiling, depending on the type of ceiling that gets put in. Often these days, people aren't actually putting in ceilings. So even greater sort of loftiness to the office environments, which we believe will be very attractive for future tenants to come to this building. Let's go to the next. And then just to reiterate, the cladding system for the car park will glow gently at night. It's a perforated metal panel will customize the perforations. The double height story, double story height panels to give a sense of broken down, again, the scale. So you don't read seven stories of car parking, you actually read far fewer because of the way we're hiding each intermediate parking level behind the double story lift of these perforated metal panels. And they're also interrupted by these light powder blue, very subtle juxtaposition of color, the powder blue against the warmth of the terracotta, subtly breaking down the, the color palette of the car park itself, which is, as I mentioned, will glow gently at night. Let's go to the next slide. And again, now looking down Penn Avenue towards downtown district. Again, the refined articulation, you see the terraces just creeping into shot there and the cutaway corner just helping to slender the verticality of the tower itself, despite the horizontal expression, which alludes back to 1600 Smallman Street and also the terminal building from the previous shot. Let's go to the next. And then this is a view from the river, of course. As we've said, a transition building, so there'll be fewer additional buildings coming into shot, particularly from the right hand side of this photograph as future developments start to take place. And again, we wanted this building to be a sort of quiet transition between future developments and the strip district itself, which is partly why we're stepping down towards the strip district in that cascading pinwheel effect of the tower itself and maintaining the green edge of the cornice line that was the original height of the Wally Building. Let's go to the next. And then, as we've mentioned, you know, this, like many of the buildings in the district do not necessarily have water retention measures. So it's 100% impervious and we're now with the existing approval keeping the roof scape 42% pervious. And then you might want to say a few words about this particular aspect of the project in the way that it hasn't changed from the previous. Okay, so we'll skip over that. We'll go to the next. Sorry, go back one there. So the top of the building, we see this as a perforate, a translucent fritted glass. These are circulating. So there will be people moving from elevator banks to bathrooms and to the floors as the elevator to serve the uppermost floors, the elevators and the plant and machinery have to pass through all of the different terrace levels. So this is really a diagram to show how we see this as sort of gently illuminated translucent, semi translucent beacon. And it could change color with the way we'll light it with LED lights for different festivals, perhaps, you know, some St. Patrick's Day parade or whatever it might happen to be. When the Steelers win or something like that, it could turn yellow. So it has a tunability, but I think importantly as well, because this is really a cartoon diagram of the, of the intention. I think it would just gently glow at night and you'll see in the later rendering how we see that. It wouldn't be brightly lit. It wouldn't become some sort of eyesore beacon with light pollution everywhere. But just a subtle glow that could change in color according to season or according to some sort of celebratory event. Let's go to the next. And then, as I mentioned, we've taken great care over the parking lighting, very high quality and fewer lighting fixtures. You won't see your, your average tube lights in here. We've got these very specialized broad spread lighting fixtures in the car park that will give it a gentler glow and a higher quality light source. Let's go to the next. Now the, the night view looking again down Smallman Street towards the downtown with the 1600 on the left and terminal building on the right. We see the gentle glow of that beacon on the, on the skyline. We also think that perhaps the terraces that help break down the volume could be slightly brighter lit than the run down the center of each of those quadrants. Could be just slightly brighter lit than the office accommodation itself. And that's something that we'll, we'll tune and play with as we develop the lighting. Let's go to the next. And now we'll come on to the more accessible open space. Here you see the sort of urban typology because of the floodplain that this part of the strip district is in, we see the 1600 building on the left and the terminal building. This is sort of almost a new urban new urban landscape of steps and bleacher seating and ramps that take people up onto that higher plane to keep out of the floodplain and maintain the animation and life of the retail, which if you didn't do this, it would, it would otherwise be there. So this urban form is no different for when you go under the bridge to the special district of which we're part of, which nonetheless is in the floodplain. And how do we deal with that particular issue? So let's go to the next. And just as a reminder, that ground floor plan, what we did, if we look at the retail at the top of this slide in pink, we bought back the retail line, reduced the amount of retail in square footage terms to widen the colonnade by a further four foot eight inches. This has enabled us to take the bleacher seating, the full length of Smallman Street and introduce, you just see there the blue arrow, introduce a further, a third accessible ramp, very, very gently cascading up in amongst the bleacher seating and the landscaping to provide greater accessibility to the upper colony. Towards 16th Street, we also reduced the amount of retail by moving the right hand northernmost face of the retail backed a further 12 feet. So we now have an open area of 31 foot six or thereabouts. A real platform where people can actually enjoy the space beyond the ramp that brings that's an accessible ramp at that end of the site. The other areas of the ground floor haven't really changed. We still have, and Cindy can talk about this, we still have the parking entry exit off of Penn. The maneuvering for truck is off the streets and within the curtilage of the site. And we have the bike cafe for more than a third of the frontage of Penn Avenue. Let's go to the next. So just as a quick reminder, as we go around the ground floor, we've been at great pains to sort of activate the ground floor of the building as much as possible. And in particular, the Penn Avenue frontage, which is a double height bike cafe for the community to enjoy mender puncher, meet up on a Saturday morning for a communal ride or for commuters to get together before they get to, get to work and a bike club could meet. And it's a real hub for bikers for the region at all times of the week. If we go to the next slide, and that's just to reiterate that double height activity that we see at all times of the week for the bike cafe. And we go to the next slide. Everybody likes to sit on streets and this is, sit on steps. And this has been sort of an urban form for throughout history. And so if we go to the next, this idea of the bleacher seating as a reminder, running all the way down Smallman Street now, I think is a very valid and something that actually I always had in the back of my mind to do, were it not for the existing foundations. So we're sort of pleased that that, that trigger took place to enable this to happen. And so we go to the next slide. We see how we've also incorporated 17 companion seating spots for wheelchair users to be with a companion and be able to chat or read a book and park the same way as able bodied people. And so that, that was a significant improvement that we worked with, with Cory and Kate and staff to, to incorporate that into the bleacher landscaping design. If we go to the next. And again, you know, just to reiterate how public, you know, sitting on steps can be to people watch, charge a phone, look at emails, catch up is always a a very popular activity for people. So let's go to the next. And so over on 16th Street on the left of this slide, you see how the retail frontage has been bought back, that 12 feet. So really create a, an area for planting and seating. And then at the other end on 15th Street, we widened, we flared out the shorter transition of the ADA ramp from the street on 15th Street up onto that. on 15th Street up onto that colonnaded platform. So again, a gentler transition. It's less of a sort of separation. Let's go to the next. And then this is really looking at that ramp that we incorporated as a very gentle 5% slope all the way up to close to the office entry for wheelchair users to come and go from the building. And it's incorporated in a very subtle way with behind the bleacher seating. So by incorporating the ramp, we didn't take anything away from both the colonnade width, which is, you know, some 11 foot four inches wide, so that there will be public seating up there that's, if you like, estate seating. In other words, it's provided not by the retail vendors who might occupy the space from within who supply that seating, but the ownership will supply the seating just like the city enjoys and supplies seating around the Tuileries in Paris, for example, or in Bryant Park in New York. So we see this as sort of urban seating, cafe seating, but supplied for everybody to use, not just the retailers. Let's go to the next slide. And that ramp is gentle enough, just as you see in the bottom-left of this slide, so that the wheelchair access doesn't need to have a balustrade upon its whole length, only at the top where we incorporated further planting that's in keeping with the rest of the bleacher seating design, just to protect people from falling off on the deeper areas of where the ramp starts and begins. Let's go to the next. So this is how it was before. You see there the knee wall that was the preservation of the existing foundation, which is now, through this dialogue and this commentary, has been taken away. We go to the next slide. And now you see the much gentler, go to the next slide. There was delay. Yeah, so now we see the much gentler cascade from the wider colonnaded area with the public seating down to the street level, which maintains that activated colonnade for the retail, which, you know, just as a reminder to keep hammering this home, this is all necessary because of the floodplain within which, we're within which. Let's go to the next. And this is just a detail. We see how the, from one of those previous slides, we see this as a very sculptural element with seating, perhaps wood or resistor-type material for maintenance rather than wood, but certainly a comfortable seating material integrated with natural grasses for this, for this particular landscaping element. Let's go to the next. And so with that said, again, I'd like to thank everybody involved, all the stakeholders and yourselves and staff for the cooperation, the dialogue. And as Matt said, we really have enjoyed being able to address these concerns and improve what we believe is a much better building for everybody. So with that, I'll hand over if you'd like to hear from Cindy about the parking spaces or whether you would like to just hand back to Cindy.
So before we go to Cindy, I just want Ben Hunter from Langin to confirm that the stormwater management plan is approved and hasn't changed. Ben, are you on?
Yes, I'm on. So the changes do not affect approved stormwater management, and that would be the stormwater management that was approved August 18th of this year.
Thank you, Ben. So Cindy, are there any additional changes to the parking, loading, or the domed access points?
No, we have no changes to the approved, the domed approved transportation study, access, loading, or parking.
Thank you. Can you then go to the next slide? And I think we can slide all through these. Is that right, Cindy?
Yes, much as I love my subject and I'd be happy to present it all again, I think we could just skip them. Here we go.
All right, so just, this is just to show you that this project has been working with the community since 2018. And we did meet again with the Strip District neighbors in November. And you have received a letter from them that should become part of the record. Next slide. And then this also shows the meetings that we've had with the city officials, the stakeholders, planning, City Council Representative Deb Gross. And the last one again was a new CDAP meeting. So I just want to tell you that in our appendix, we have a lot of letter support from the neighbors that are part of the record. And that is all we have. We'll open this up for questions at this point. I guess there's one more slide.
Thank you. At this time, we take public testimonies. Is there anyone who would like to speak with regards to this project?
No hands are raised at this time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, questions or comments from the commission? I would like to thank Brandon and your team, Dusty and your team, for coming back to us with the changes that you did. It, the changes that you made, it shows that you were listening to our concerns and that you embraced some of the limitations that those concerns might have represented and kind of turned them to amenities in the building, whether it's the outdoor spaces that you've created on the tower or the sensitive integration of the wheelchair areas and the steps on the ground level. I greatly appreciate that sensitivity in, you know, making lemonade out of what might have been considered a lemon by some. We really appreciate that. Any other questions or comments from the commission? Do I have, if there are no others, do I have a motion to approve?
Sell move, Blackwell.
Do I have a second?
Second, Burton Falk.
Okay. Okay, let me do a roll call. Commissioner Askey?
Aye.
Commissioner Blackwell?
Aye.
Commissioner Burton Falk?
Aye.
Commissioner Dietrich?
Aye.
Commissioner Dick?
Aye.
Commissioner Mingo?
Aye.
Commissioner Mandor? Aye. Commissioner, oh, Commissioner O'Neill is not present, so. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
You.
Okay. Get to our agenda here. Okay, our last item under hearing in action is item five, six-month extension of iPod six inclusionary housing overlay district. Mr. Corbett?
Yep. Good afternoon, commissioners. I have, on the call with me is Director Andrew Dash for the Department of City Planning. We are coming to you today to request a recommendation to council to extend the inclusionary housing interim overlay district in Lawrenceville and to promote affordability and affordable housing. The reason that we are requesting this recommendation to council is the iPod was for 18 months and it will expire in January of 2021. We will come back to you all next year, at the top of next year, just to discuss ways to make the iPod permanent and to continue the city's work in creating affordability for our neighbors. Pretty short and sweet.
Yeah, so just to follow that, the recommendation from staff is, you know, you know, is for Planning Commission to recommend to City Council the extension of the interim planning overlay district iPod six for six additional months.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we take public testimonies. Is there anyone who would like to speak with regards to this item?
No hands are raised at this time.
Okay, thank you. Are there questions or comments from the commission?
Yeah, is there any statement or support from the City Council member?
Any statement of support from the, from council at this time?
Yeah, I mean, any from the staff or any, or any report through them on what the impacts were, any numbers? I'd say, Christopher, when you come back in January, what will be helpful when your next round is really giving us a lot more information on what's happened and the impacts. Perfectly happy, of course, to support this. This is, you know, great. There's no contention. It's just that I'd like, you know, I wasn't really sure since it's come out. It seems a bit last minute. Is that the thing that there's the impending due date coming up and we won't be meeting until the middle of the month? So you need, you need a little break here?
Yeah, so the, just, and I'll answer for Christopher and he can jump in. You know, just given the expiration of the 18 months for the interim planning overlay district, which is allowed by code to be extended once for the additional six. Initially, we were trying to just replace the iPod with a, you know, with a permanent replacement that had all of the same language in it, understanding that right now the city is going through Forging PGH, the comprehensive planning process. And we very recently brought a consultant on as a part of that to be updating the city's housing needs assessment, which was completed in 2016. So obviously, those things will be able to provide us greater depth of knowledge and information around the housing market, any potential changes to the housing market in the prior five years, and recommendations around, you know, around code and regulation changes, including the inclusionary zoning ordinance. So initially, what was to be a two-step process, which was that we were going to come to the commission now for a full replacement of that interim planning overlay district with a permanent overlay district. You know, and then a second phase where we would evaluate the language and regulations that are in that post the completion of the comprehensive planning housing needs assessment. Did, you know, given the timeline, we, that's, that's why instead of being able to replace it with a permanent district right now, we are asking for an extension to the iPod to make sure that we can take on those other, you know, kind of two phases of, you know, you know, making sure that we are making inclusionary zoning permanent in the city of Pittsburgh as well as a commitment to looking at, you know, changes to the inclusionary zoning ordinance that will, that probably would come to the commission in, towards the end of 2021 or beginning of 2022.
Thank you.
All right, I'd like to make a motion for the recommendation to council to extend the iPod six inclusionary housing overlay district.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Burton Falk. Do I have a second?
Second, Commissioner O'Neill.
Great, okay. Let me do a roll call. Commissioner Askey?
Aye.
Commissioner Blackwell?
Aye.
Commissioner Burton Falk?
Aye.
Commissioner Dietrich?
Aye.
Commissioner Dick?
Aye.
Secretary Mingo?
Aye.
Commissioner Mandor? Aye. Commissioner O'Neill?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. That takes us through our items for hearing in action. We're now going to move to plan of lots and we're going to take items one through three. And then items four, five, six, and seven is batches. So I am going to read through the, all seven. I will start off the item, the first batch of items, and then Commissioner Burton Falk will take over at that point. So all seven of our plan of lots, for those who are listening but cannot see the agenda. Item one is DCP Lot 2020-00238, Duquesne Light consolidation, major consolidation meeting one bluff. Item two is DCP Lot 2020-01320, address 3500 Forbes consolidation, major consolidation meeting two, Central Oakland. And item three is DCP Lot 2020-01333, the Cow Bride Place consolidation, major consolidation meeting two, California Kirk Bride. That will be taken as one batch. Items four through seven, I'll now read through, which will be taken as a second. Item four is DCP Lot 2020-01353, East Ohio Street consolidation, minor consolidation, East Allegheny. Item five is DCP Lot 2020-01250, address 702nd Avenue consolidation, minor consolidation, Central Business District. Item six is DCP Lot 2020-01183, address 4835 Hatfield Street subdivision, minor subdivision, Central Lawrenceville. And item seven is DCP Lot 2020-00765, address 4030 North Aiken Avenue, Lot Line Revision, Lot Line Revision in Garfield. And we begin with items one through three.
Thanks. And to clarify, item one can be taken separately and the remaining six should be batched.
Okay, thank you.
So item one is the Duquesne Light consolidation. This is the proposed consolidation of 20 parcels into one parcel. The lot would have 112 feet of frontage on Multrie Street, 237 feet of frontage on Fifth Avenue, and would be 70,959 square feet in area. The subject property is currently vacant and the recommended motion is to approve, is to preliminary approve the Duquesne Light consolidation and schedule final approval on January 12th, 2020.
Commissioner Burton Falk, I'm still here. I can see this one through.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks. Okay, thank you. At this time, we take public testimonies. Is there anyone who would like to speak with regards to this item?
We do have a hand raised.
Okay, thank you.
Roy Whale, you're unmuted.
Okay. Roy Whale, I live at 5337 Darlington Road, Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, 15217. I realize it's a little late in the process, but I would like the applicant to consider an easement for a bicycle, a switchback connection between Forbes and Fifth Avenue at this location. I understand that there are plans to provide a bike path under the Birmingham Bridge to transition from Second Avenue to Forbes Avenue and also for to transition from the existing bike trail down to Second Avenue. At present, there is no safe way for bicyclists to transition between Forbes and Fifth. A lot of great position outbound on Forbes to Craft Avenue means you have to cross the exit ramp from the parkway, which is high-speed traffic. Also, Craft Avenue from Forbes to Fifth is narrow one lane. Going up Montaire, Montaire Street, it's a very steep street. One would have to walk up it. And from Forbes to Fifth, one would have to travel half-block against one-way traffic. So I'd like to see, encourage the applicant Duquesne Light to establish a runway for a switchback ramp on the property. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that has testimony? Anyone else with their hand raised?
No, no other hands are raised at this time.
Okay, great. Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments?
This is Commissioner O'Neill, just in response to the gentleman's comment. The commission itself doesn't regulate easements, personal or public, but I would encourage Duquesne Light to reach out to the gentleman or vice versa. This is the first meeting. It will be reviewed again at our next meeting because it is a major consolidation. So there is that opportunity before they come back to have that discussion. If you'd like to kind of check in and then check back with us. Thank you.
Thank you. So is there a motion from the floor?
Okay, I will move that we give preliminary approval to this with it being, coming back on January 20th, January 12th, '21 for final approval. And that we encourage the speaker and... the speaker and the bespoke in Duquesne Light to get together to talk about this matter of an easement for bicycles.
Appreciate you, Commissioner Dick. Do we have a second?
Second, Commissioner O'Neil.
All right. I'll do a roll call here. Commissioner Askey?
Aye.
Commissioner Blackwell?
Aye.
Commissioner Burton Falk?
Aye.
Commissioner Dietrich?
Aye.
Commissioner Dick?
Aye.
Commissioner Mingo?
Aye.
And Commissioner O'Neil?
Aye.
Okay, great. They're very good. Daniel, just correct me if I'm wrong, we're taking the rest, two through seven, in the next, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, very good. Then, good to proceed.
The next item is the 3500 Forbes consolidation. This is the consolidation of five parcels into one parcel. Lot A would have three hundred and twenty-seven feet of frontage on Simple Street, one hundred and seventy-six feet of frontage on Forbes Avenue, two hundred and sixty-seven feet of frontage on McKee Place. It would be fifty-one thousand eight hundred and seven square feet in area. A gas station, parking lot, and a commercial building are located on the subject property, and this is a major subdivision, which was first reviewed by the Planning Commission on November twenty-fourth, 2020. And the recommended motion is to approve the 3500 Forbes consolidation. The next item is the Cow Bride Place consolidation. This is the consolidation of forty-four parcels into nine parcels. Lot one would have one hundred and fourteen feet of frontage on California Avenue, thirty-one feet of frontage on Kunkel Avenue, it would be six thousand two hundred and forty-one square feet in area. Lot two would have thirty-nine feet of frontage on Kunkel Avenue, it would be three thousand two hundred and twenty-one square feet in area. Lot three would have thirty-nine feet of frontage on Kunkel Avenue, it would be three thousand two hundred and twenty-one square feet in area. Lot four would have forty feet of frontage on Kunkel Avenue, it would be three thousand two hundred and sixty-two square feet in area. Lot five would have forty-three feet of frontage on Kunkel Avenue, it would be three thousand five hundred and forty-seven square feet in area. Lot six would have forty-eight feet of frontage on Kunkel Avenue, it would be three thousand eight hundred and ninety square feet in area. Lot seven would have one hundred and seventy-five feet of frontage on California Avenue, two hundred and seventy-nine feet of frontage on Kunkel Avenue, one hundred and sixty-five feet of frontage on Sedgwick Street, and would be forty-four thousand two hundred and twenty-seven square feet in area. Lot eight would have two hundred and ninety-seven feet of frontage on Kirk Bride Street, and would be twenty-nine thousand two hundred and ninety-nine square feet in area. Lot nine would have fifty feet of frontage on Sedgwick Street, and would be three thousand four hundred and thirty-seven square feet in area. Two structures are located on the subject property, and this is a major subdivision, which was first reviewed by the Planning Commission on November twenty-fourth, 2020, and the recommended motion is to approve the Cow Bride Place consolidation. The next item is the East Ohio Street consolidation. This is the consolidation of three parcels into one parcel. The proposed lot would have thirty-six feet of frontage on East Street, and would be two thousand nine hundred and twenty-five square feet in area. A three-story structure is located on the subject property, and the recommended motion is to approve the East Ohio Street consolidation. The next item is the 702nd Avenue consolidation. This is the consolidation of two parcels into one parcel. The proposed lot would have one hundred and seventy-one feet of frontage on Second Avenue, and would be twenty-six thousand twenty-nine square feet in area. A parking lot is located on the subject property, and the recommended motion is to approve the 702nd Avenue consolidation. The next item is the 4835 Hatfield Street subdivision. This is the subdivision of one parcel into three parcels. The proposed lot one would have thirteen feet of frontage on Plumway, and would be six hundred and thirty-seven square feet in area. Lot two would have twelve feet of frontage on Plumway, and would be six hundred and eleven square feet in area. Lot three would have eighteen feet of frontage on Hatfield Street, and would be eight hundred and eighty-one square feet in area. Three attached houses are located on the subject property, and the recommended motion is to approve the 4836 Hatfield Street subdivision. The next item is the North Aiken Avenue Lot Line Revision. This is a lot line revision involving two parcels. Lot one would have twenty-seven feet of frontage on Aiken Avenue, and would be two thousand five hundred and ninety-two square feet in area. Lot two would have twenty-seven feet of frontage on Aiken Avenue, it would be two thousand five hundred and ninety-two square feet in area. No new parcels are created in this plan, and the subject property is currently vacant. The recommended motion is to approve the North Aiken Lot Line Revision. And that concludes the plan of lots reports. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Daniel. You've done a great job. So at this time, we open the floor for public testimony on the plan of lots two through seven. Is there anyone that has their hand raised for any of those items?
No hands are raised at this time.
Okay, great, thank you. At this time, commissioners, do you have any questions or comments related to items two through seven in plan of lots? Hearing none, would I get a motion from the floor to approve?
So moved Commissioner O'Neil.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Neil. Do I have a second?
Second, Blackwell.
Thank you, Commissioner Blackwell. I will go in order of commissioners. Commissioner Askey?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Blackwell?
Aye.
Commissioner Burton Falk?
Aye.
Commissioner?
Aye.
Commissioner Dick?
Aye.
Commissioner Mingo?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Neil?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much for the plan of lots. Now, our final agenda item for today is item E, which is the director's report. Do we have a director's report today? Okay.
Hey, I'm here. Andrew isn't, but on behalf of Andrew, I just wanted to wish all of you, and really on behalf of all of us at City Planning, want to wish all of you a happy holiday season and the new year. We won't be seeing you again until 2021, so we'll put 2020 behind us and see you next year.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Lehman. I would like to make a comment as well, and I guess I'll do this on the record. Thank you very much, commissioners. It has been a great year figuring out how to Zoom planning to the city of Pittsburgh. Just keep hunkered down, keep safe, stay well, enjoy this holiday, and know that we can get through anything. So with that being said, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right. Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, good and beautiful people.
Have a good holiday and break, everyone.
Happy holidays. Be safe and wear those masks.
See you in January.
See you in January.
And thank you, staff.
Yes, thank you.